I call this meeting of the City of Urbana Committee of the Hold to Order. Will the Clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting from 1016 meeting, as well as the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by Mary Alice Wu and seconded by Grace Wilkin. Is there any substantive corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Next item is presentations and public input. If you wish to address the Committee of the Hold, please step up to the mic, say your first name, first and last name, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Patton, and I live at 609 West Indiana in Urbana. And I wish to address Chief Boone's request for additional police officers. I appreciate the time Chief Boone has taken since he's come to Urbana this past July to listen to the community, as well as members of city staff about our experiences with and hopes for policing in Urbana. Information gleaned from those listening sessions, along with Chief Boone's law enforcement experience and his outside looking in perspective can be very beneficial. And it's not surprising that Chief Boone is proposing staffing changes in his first year as our Chief of Police. But two questions came to my mind when I learned of the request for a significant increase in police officers beginning this year. First, isn't it premature to formally request additional police officers when we have not yet received the final report from Barry Dunn? The consultants have spent the past several months analyzing dispatch data to develop a staffing study of our police force to help us determine how well the Urbana Police Department is responding to calls for service. My understanding from the meetings I've attended with Barry Dunn is that along with the staffing study, we will also receive recommendations on how we can improve our approach to public safety using traditional and alternative methods. Given the investment we made in Barry Dunn's consultant services, it seems hasty to me to request additional police staff before we know the outcome of Barry Dunn's detailed analysis. Secondly, in Chief Boone's staffing request to improve UPD's effectiveness, where is the plan to expand our small crisis co-responder model? The city has been vocal in its commitment to a crisis co-responder model, which many know employs mental health professionals to work with law enforcement in responding to calls for service that involve a person experiencing a mental health crisis. Many of us were encouraged with the city's Small Co-Responder Pilot Program, which started in 2021. In fact, that commitment to alternative approaches to policing is what influenced my decision to apply as a member of the Urbana Civilian Police Review Board. In the 18 months that I've served on the CPRB, I've reviewed dozens of police calls for service during my ride-alongs with police, as well as video footage of incidents involving TASER display and TASER discharges. To effectively respond to calls for service, it is quite apparent that we need additional mental health professionals working with our law enforcement. We know the co-responder model offers a more effective response to mental health crises, and when implemented well, the model helps reduce further crisis situations, which often lead to additional calls for service. A wise investment of public dollars targeting public safety in Urbana should incorporate the findings of the Barry Dunn Public Safety Consultants and include an expansion of our Crisis Co-Responder Program. Thank you for your service.
Martell Miller, from Champaign. And I heard a couple people talk. And here I come out, when I'm in public, I say black man first, because you lift a black man, you lift the whole world. We've been treated the worst. And the reason I say that, my first crime, when I walk out the house, is this. I've been stopped so many times for nothing. I've had guns pulled on me over 14 times for driving. And I ain't been in this place all my life. I didn't deal on the street. I did things on the street. I went in places. I was up in Chicago in the bad neighborhoods. Never got a gun pulled on me during that time. Driving through Ohio, I had nine police cars behind me. Car suspicious. Not nothing I did. I was pulled over for car suspicious. So when we're talking about police, we got to talk about how they train. And that all these policemen took de-escalations. Of course, it's for since, I say, 2000s. You still see police escalate stuff. You know, when I talk to Mr. Boone, I thought I talked to him one day. And I asked him a question. He told me he went through the country, and he's in the city. If I asked how was he treated by the police, he'd never answer that question. But he knew his first crime is being black. When you talk about gun violence, I talked about gun violence in 2016. Told them these guns was on the street, and the people didn't know where they was coming from. And then, when the shootings start, that's when they start trying to find out where the guns came from. But I told them three years ahead, before we had the shooting things that we had in Champaign, about most cities. Talked to both Chiefs of Police about it. And like I would say to y'all, again, if y'all don't put money in people, y'all ain't gonna deal with your problem. Took me years to get Champaign to put money in people. I used to come over here to see his Citizen of Justice piece. Urbana was so active dealing with what goes on in their community with people. Now, I don't know if I'm in Urbana or old Champaign. You know? Because this is a, I stayed in Urbana for eight years. I didn't have really no problem walking down the street until one night, I'm walking down Illinois Street, get pulled over by the police, ask me where I'm going. I said, "Why?" He said, "I need to know where you been." I said, "Why? You just asked where I'm going? Didn't you ask me where I been? I'm not answering that question." But when I handed him my license, he realized I was Martell Miller. He drove off. Hand my license, drove off, didn't ask me any questions. You know? Because I sued the cities, the police departments, and the state's attorney for filming the police at work in public. So if y'all want to invest this money, I don't think using government violence will help us. And the reason I say government violence, because you investing money that ain't gonna help the people. You know? Put money in a shelter. This guy talking about having people come and stay at your house. How many people, like I'm out here every day, it's 150 people or more on these streets every day. Lot of them got mental illness. Let's get the money for the, you want somebody that's totally psychotic in your house, you know? I just met them today, I'm gonna bring them in the house. You don't even know nothing about them. But if you have a shelter, you can figure it out. Then you can find them housing. Get them medicated. But don't come up here saying, move somebody in your house. You can't get people to put their relatives in their house because they have such problems. So that comment there didn't make any sense to me. But Urbana City Council, I'm asking you, please, invest in people. That's how you change a community. Thank you.
Adam Nichols, I am here to ask the Council to vote no on the ordinance to revise the annual budget, spending another half million on the Urbana Police. And I've got three reasons. I think this has been a bad process. I think it's the wrong time, and I think it's the wrong priorities. So in terms of process, this came up and is being voted on tonight. The public gets to give input before it's discussed by the committee. The only thing we have to go on is basically this one sheet of paper here. Let's contrast this to other spending efforts. The stormwater renovations, where we were debating whether we wanted to do critical repairs to stormwater systems. We had multiple meetings, they reached out, they mailed people, they took comments, there were surveys. This seems like a pretty reasonable process for any kind of spending decision. Next, I say it's the wrong time. We have a budgeting cycle. This is an out-of-cycle thing. So it sounds like this is some kind of an emergency, where we can't wait until the normal budgeting cycle, we want to do it now. And if we wait until we're considering all of the entire budget, we can make better trade-offs in like, do we want to put more money in police? Okay, where's that money coming from? Is it coming from one of these other programs? Are we gonna raise taxes? Like, how are we gonna make everything work? And it's kind of like, you get to see everything all at once. And the police have participated in that process, and they've gotten an extra 2.75 million in the last two funding cycles, budget cycles. So that's an appropriate time to have these discussions, is during the budget cycle. And, you know, I think it's the wrong priority, just personally, because it takes away from the other efforts. We already said the committee has committed to not raising the tax rate, which means, and we're not going to go back, we're funding the fire and police pensions, that money's locked in. So if we're not, you know, raising taxes, the money's gotta come from somewhere. The specific proposal for tonight doesn't actually address the issues of responding to calls. So these are gonna be community outreach officers and other deputy police. So the things that I have heard from the police, and I've spoken to them, and Community Watch and such, is that they don't have enough patrol officers. But what's being proposed is not more patrol officers. So I think, and the other thing is, if we spend this half million now to get these community engagement officers, it's gonna make it more difficult to get patrolmen, like people walking the beat later on. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Derek Briles. I'm a resident of Urbana Ward 4, also here to talk about the budget ordinance, and urge you to very strongly not support this. It is laughably outrageous. I know you just got here, Chief Boone, but we've been talking about this for years. I was here a year ago, when you were trying to give the cops another million dollars, right? You wanted to approve collective bargaining agreement six months before it was coming due. And I heard, meeting after meeting, every single one of you, "Oh, we can't do anything. We can't do anything. We've just paid an ordinance sum of money to Barry Dunn to do a public safety review. Oh, we can't do anything now. We have got to wait for that public safety review." You get a new police chief, suddenly, money's just coming out the ass. You want to pay it to everybody. Now it's not a problem to get new cops. Before, nothing. You wouldn't listen to anybody. How many people, way more than are in this room today, were here last year talking about this same issue? And we heard over and over again, "Oh, we're doing this public safety review. Oh, it's gonna be different." It's not different. We knew it wasn't gonna be different, but it would have been nice if you have tried, right? But you're not trying. You're not here to serve the people. The police are certainly not here to serve and protect. They're here to serve themselves to our tax dollars while protecting themselves from any form of accountability. That's what we asked for, right? And that contract was police accountability, not more police. Certainly not community outreach police to read books to children or whatever. They don't need that. Hire a professional to do that. Hire a teacher. Get some mental health support. Get some drug support. All these cops are gonna do is railroad more poor, innocent people into that shithole death trap you call a jail. Tilly Dietz just died in that jail, what, a year ago, from drug issues? Ray Gwynn? The list is massive, is so long, the people that die in that jail because they don't have the services they need, because they don't have housing, because they don't have mental health care, because they don't have anyone helping them with their substance abuse issues. And they die. And the ones that don't die, their lives can be ruined just as easily. I never have heard you ever talk about these issues, never. You always find money for cops. You find time for cops. You want to talk about cops. Well, I can tell you one thing for sure, the thin blue line absolutely exists. But it is not a line that protects decent citizens from violent criminals. It is a thin blue line that protects all of you elected officials from accountability to the people. They are your armed guards that keep us in check because you refuse to do the job you were elected for. I know at least two of you on this council, when you were elected, ran in 2020, right? Let's defund the police. You're not voting against funding the police, you're constantly voting for funding the police. You are essentially just outright lying to the people in your campaigns and in your statements previously about the public safety review. This is outrageous. And it's all on video, right? Anyone can look at it, if they care to, if they have the time to. It's, I mean, I just don't know what to say. And I'm just completely gobsmacked by this. Absolutely outrageous behavior. A joke, I'm a taxpayer here, I'm a homeowner, and I sure as shit don't want any more dollars from my taxes going to pay the police who make more money than I do. You know what the average household income is in this city of yours? 37,000. Cops start at 70, most of them making over 100 grand. That's for one person, not a household. There's like 19% of Urbana, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, U.S. Census Bureau, lives in poverty. Poverty. 19% of your city, Mayor Marlin, is in poverty. You aren't in poverty. I know what you make, and that's public. I know what the cops make, that's public. Do something. Do something real. Help real people. Fund services they need. That will stop crime. Don't railroad people into that death trap of a jail. Don't support this. Don't do it.
Again, I'm Stephen McGuire. I think a lot of my questions were answered. So I think, one, people brought up that we have been told we are in a severe budget crisis. If that's the case, then this is not the best expenditure. Our mental health system does need drastic overhaul. We have the pavilion, the fifth floor, and I think you can go to the emergency room at Carl, and then maybe they'll get you into the fifth floor. But those are very rudimentary services. Oftentimes, they're kicking people out as soon as they get in without adequate treatment. And we definitely need to also, the fact that, I think, on one hand, sorry, sir, what's your name? Martell brought up a very valid point in that, no, you can't really just have someone come in to your house who's homeless, in that, hey, oftentimes, people with mental health issues are very hard to live with. At the same time, the other gentleman brought up a very valid point, that when we propose shelters, when we propose increasing services, people say, "Not in my backyard." Perhaps, I think, with what we've learned, perhaps what might be better expenditure, since someone brought up that city grant writing is not at adequate staffing levels, that needs to be fixed, in that grant writers get money that, so that we don't have long hearings that may not otherwise have been available. So that, I'm not against the idea of having cops read to kids. However, if it's going to take funding, that definitely needs to go elsewhere, I'm sorry to say, from, and that if we don't have our grant writers, if we don't have adequate grant writing staff, that needs to definitely have money spent on it. Because those people are the ones who work miracles and can get money for some of the programs that can't go in. Also, Marina brought up, I'm not sure if it was you or someone brought up, the report on, on the Dunn report, I think it was? Barry Dunn. If we're going to decide to spend more money on officers, we should get the data from that first. I'm not saying necessarily, at the moment, I'm saying no. Hey, maybe, but we should get the data from that at least first. Also, someone brought up the model of having mental health responders go with officers. That is something I'm very much behind. I've done CIT training as part of NAMI. We go to speak to officers, and it costs a lot to help officers with CIT training, having more mental health people employed. And that is something I definitely want a commitment to. My current view at this time, and that I have to profess, I need to come to more of these city council meetings, just to find out business overall, the overall budget, et cetera, is that at the current time, we should not spend on this. But perhaps should table this and talk about, because people have brought up definite things about what they want to see. We want to see mental health services, and that is something we need desperately, and that is something that your officers definitely need, because they are our social workers. The very first CIT training I went to with NAMI, one of the officers stood up and told an anecdote from when he was in the academy, and said that the sergeant said, "Look to the man or woman on your left, and look to the man or woman on your right." Those are America's social workers. People have brought up the rightful point that the police should not be our social workers. Anyway, thank you.
Hi. My name is George Vassalatos. Over the past few years, you have repeatedly voted to increase the Urbana Police Department budget. Since the 2020 protests, it's been skyrocketing, higher and higher and higher, with no sign of slowing down. Millions have been poured into the police, despite constant public opposition and concern. And now, the council wants to drop another half million and hire four more officers? Did the previous half million do anything to keep our community safer? Did it strengthen the civilian review board and build community trust? Did it help keep people facing eviction in their homes, or help keep Urbana families fed? What about the half million before that? Or the half million before that? Or the million before that? You're continuing to indiscriminately dump money into the police, with nothing to show for it. Raise your hand if you were elected on the platform of drastically expanding the police You're certainly not representing the thousands of Urbana residents who took to the streets in 2020 to demand change. You're certainly not representing anyone here. Most of you were elected on progressive platforms. And all of this is happening in the middle of a surge in police brutality and police terrorism across the county. This year, cops in Rantoul murdered two young black men, Jordan Richardson and Zan Lee. And the state's attorney, Julia Reitz, immediately cleared the officers of any wrongdoing before the Rantoul police even had time to finish their own internal assessment on use of force. It's looking like Reitz is gonna run for the Democratic nomination unopposed, and that means that the next four years will look a lot like the last 20, in terms of police accountability. She's never held a single officer responsible for brutality. She's never held them accountable. It's been 20 years. Even if you, unlike your constituents, personally trust Urbana police officers, pouring money into the police department without creating robust municipal safeguards and public oversight just means that there will be more and more police in Urbana, in this county, roaming around, operating with complete confidence that no matter what they do, what crimes they commit, which of our neighbors they kill, county-level officials, the Fraternal Order of Police, and the Urbana City Government will shield them from the public and from accountability. Grow a spine. Vote against this.
My name is Robert Naaman. I currently reside at 806 East Washington in Urbana. And I'm here to note the passing of Reverend James B. Holloman, last Sunday, November 26th. There is an obituary notice in yesterday's News Gazette. The visitation will be on Friday afternoon at 1:00 at the Memorial Home in Savoy, and services will be Saturday morning at University Place Christian Church. Reverend Holloman was the executive director and campus minister at the Illinois Disciples Foundation at Springfield and Wright in Champaign from 1963 until his retirement in 1999, 36 years, during which time he, in the 1960s, counseled young men in our community at the University of Illinois, who opposed the Vietnam War and were struggling with facing the draft to Vietnam. He also was a leader in this community of the Public Sanctuary Movement for Refugees from the U.S.-backed war in El Salvador. And in this room, or its predecessor, a crowd like this came and addressed the Urbana City Council and asked the Urbana City Council to declare itself a city of refuge, which it did. And there were people here who said, "This is, this belongs to the federal government, President Reagan, Immigration Naturalization Service." And Bernadine Stig was sitting right there, and she said, "No, this is something that we need to address." And the Urbana City Council stood with Bernadine Stig and made that declaration of our community, which for me is symbolic of something larger. Many of us see Urbana as a city of refuge in a larger sense. And that's a topic that was being addressed from this position the last time I attended this meeting. So, and the last point I wanted to make is that Jim Holloman helped start the food co-op at the Illinois Disciples Foundation, which is now across the street as an anchor at Lincoln Square, serving this community. So I wanted to note the passing of Jim Holloman. Not everybody religiously reads the obituary pages of the News Gazette, and hopefully, people watching on TV will get the news. Friends of Jim Holloman will come on Friday or Saturday to note the passing of this giant of our community who shaped the lives of so many people, so many young people, so many students at the University of Illinois, to turn their lives, devote their lives towards peace and social justice. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Marlin, City Council and staff. My name is Deshaun Williams. I'd like to share my stance concerning the development of a community engagement unit for the Urbana Police Department. As a leader within the community, I've listened to concerns of many residents regarding the need for improved relations with local law enforcement and those who have expressed that overpolicing is not the answer. It is my belief that what we need more of is to continue to foster trust between local law enforcement and its residents. It is imperative that our residents know and rely on the truth that local law enforcement exists to protect and serve all Urbana residents. There are a number of needed investments for the city of Urbana. Housing, education, social services, mental health support, small business development, and the list goes on. So while considerations are being made, my ask is that all options for strengthening relationships between local law enforcement and the community be explored, not limited to, but including public forums, community surveying, and partnerships with fellow municipalities who have similar units to assess the outcomes and fiscal impact of such units. We need to have a proper balance. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deron Gross from Naples. I live at Brooks House in the Couch Co-ops. I just wanted to come here and I wanted to remark that over the past couple of years, we've had quite a few meetings and discussions internal to the co-ops about what we can do to de-escalate situations and protect our members, specifically because people do not feel safe calling the police. People have either had bad experiences with the police or know people who have had bad experiences with the police. And all of that energy and time of hours has had to be put towards that. And I would urge you to vote, I would urge you to work towards putting your resources, not towards people carrying a threat of violence on their hip, but towards programs that can effectively help residents of Urbana and nearby without them having to fear for their safety. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Ensland. In this very room, maybe 15, 20 years ago, there was a hearing about the proposed civilian police review board. And at this hearing, there was a young woman who talked about an incident in which she was at a party and there was a fight. And many Urbana police showed up to try to break this up. And she said her cousin was bleeding. And so, she was trying to get the attention of the police officers to try to get them to call an ambulance for her cousin. And what she said happened was, the police pushed her down to the ground. This is just one of many incidents in which adding police to a situation does not increase public safety, does not decrease violence, and is not helping the problems that they are supposed to be solving. Throwing police at a problem is not going to solve it, including a PR problem. The proposal to add community engagement officers, to me, looks like an attempt to throw police at a PR problem. Much better for the PR would be if the problems of poverty, of homelessness, of mental health services were addressed directly rather than through that means. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Ellie. I feel that this is perfunctory. I'm pessimistic here, for sure, but I feel this was voted on before the meeting was scheduled. This isn't in line with any reasonable expectation of transparency or normal governance. You guys are doing this out of budget cycle, without the review, without good information on the minutes and the material to the people in the meeting. If you wanted to hear us tell you no, and you wanted that to inform your vote, I don't think that's how this meeting would have rolled out. So, I'm worried that asking you to vote no is completely immaterial. I think you're going to vote yes anyways. So, you are not alone on some of these issues. Democrats across the country are on the ropes for having been disingenuous since 2020. Urbana is not the only community dealing with these issues. You're not the only representatives that have backtracked from your commitments and are facing issues with your constituency. I'm sorry you're having to deal with that. We've heard unfounded fears of some of the community members that they are less safe in their homes, that the police need a living wage, that the police are at risk and need our support. This is all generally factually inaccurate. Since the 60s, police workplace casualties are down by half per capita, while per capita policing has doubled. It's a fairly safe job, all things considered. They're very well-paid, and crime is on the decline in our community. Fearful rhetoric not based in evidence should be rejected. You need metrics for success here. How many dollars is too many dollars? How many officers is too many officers? This expansion will put Urbana over the national average of officers per capita. How far above the national average will you be willing to go before you have an issue? I want you to all individually think about that. What percentage? How many officers is too many? How many millions of dollars is too much? So, since I know that this is, I feel like this is going to pass, I'm going to have to ask again for better wellness check programs. These are models pushed by communities across the country. Dozens of police chiefs, dozens of communities have rolled this model out. We don't need to rebuild it. We don't need, we can take it on a silver platter. It's been built by committees of subject matter experts and heavily weighed through public commentary periods. I'm not talking about wellness officers out with armed police. Talking about not sending the armed police on almost 90% of the calls. In these communities, we see less than 10% of the calls require an armed officer. We need to roll these programs out. Chief, you're going to get this money. You seem open to commentary. Please listen to the peer consensus of other chiefs around the country. These communities are leading the national edge on what police reform looks like. We could be one of those communities. We could be in the national spotlight, pushing forward the most progressive of programs. They're often integrated into the police department and the police budget. They have to work directly with dispatch. Unlike concerns we heard earlier, they don't show up to calls that need an armed officer without an armed officer. That doesn't happen. They appropriately determine when an armed officer is needed and then take them on only the necessary calls. So, since you're going to be getting extra staffing, you're going to be getting an extra budget, and they need to be for community outreach, this is exactly what you should earmark the funds for.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Larson. I live at 206 West Oregon Street in Urbana. I'm here this evening to share my concerns about the proposal on expanding policing. And I oppose the addition of 15 police officers over three years. I think we need to be looking at public safety more holistically. I'm grateful for a variety of city township and county services that support public safety. And as others have mentioned this evening, I wish we celebrated those more often, the successes, and then also acknowledged the needs. Data that I have seen doesn't show an increase in crime, but our community struggles in other ways. In my role as, in my day job as the executive director of the Independent Media Center, I am particularly interested in the Arts Commission and appreciate the work and the arts grants that happen. And I think arts have a role to play in public safety. Unfortunately, I've seen the arts and community development staff struggle, and I hope that we can increase that instead of putting that towards policing. I'm also concerned about the financial impact. Based on my review of the budget, I don't see that we have this money to spend. And I also feel that we've been just given since last Thursday to review that information, and I don't think that's adequate. I agree with others who've said that we should wait until we have the alternative safety model study. And I think whether you vote no tonight for, to oppose the long-term plan or to give us more time to look this over, I think this is too quick to decide, and we need more time to look it over. In my role also at the Independent Media Center, I'm helping to organize a forum on public safety that will look holistically at what our city needs. That will be this coming Sunday, December 10th, at 3:00 PM, and I would invite all of you to attend. We'll have experts on a variety of social services and take some time to really study and learn about the budget for the city of Urbana. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
We're polite Midwesterners. At this point, I want to speak to the specific proposal to add four officers and an unstated proposal, but that was shared in the community engagement sessions, to add 15 more officers. I have some questions. Why is this coming now? I will not repeat what Peggy said, but basically what Peggy said. According to the budget narrative, that isn't supposed to come out until summer of 2024, the Barry Dunn Report. And yet, the police proposal tonight says it flows from that. That makes no sense that the public would not have access to a report that you're basing information on. Also, I just want to state, township is an absolute stakeholder in public safety. We were sent to Barry Dunn, my representative, Chris Evans, sent my contact, also to Chief Boone. No one reached out to us. We were not included on the stakeholder survey. By the time I was able to get access to it, I had reached out to Mayor Marlin. It was closed. I have not given public input, and it does call into question that entire report. I would like some help being part of that conversation. Second, what is the model being proposed? And I'm sorry, the Chief Boone can't hear my statement, so I hope that you can share this with him. What is the problem we're trying to address? Is it more patrol? We have six people in training. They're going to hit patrol soon. Why not see if that solves the problem? Is it overtime? You have a half a million in overtime. Why don't you use that budget to hire more police but not add to the police budget? More engagement? I want to talk about this issue of tutoring. Community engagement sounds good, but I was very concerned with Chief Boone's statement about tutoring. He said he wanted folks, he wanted folks to trust police officers. Okay. Then he said he wanted them to tutor to learn how to read. That does not make sense. I think the educators in the room, that does not make sense. Then he said, basically, they will give us access to information. That he began to talk about, and I slept on it, and I woke up that morning thinking, you have a person you're working with, a child you're tutoring, he shares with you some information about another family down the street? That child is, that is now used to investigate that family? That child being tutored is a danger of retaliation. And that's a lot of the gun violence we saw in the community a few years back. Please do not allow police officers to question children without their parents present. That should be a rule in the community. Third question. That was Martell Miller's statement, actually. He shared this with me. So, credit to Martell. Why is the whole proposal not on the table for public comment? Why is this piecemeal approach? We were asked to, the council was asked to give bonuses and raises. Then the next thing, you know, they pass a budget, which has a significant increase for police. Then mid-year, you're asked for four officers, right? At $550,000. There's hints that there's another 11 coming on the way. And what I have been told is that essentially, the chief has asked council to support in closed session, in closed sessions with you, the 15 officers. That is not legitimate. It has to be a public conversation. The entire picture and how it's going to be funded needs to be a public conversation before you make any further decisions on any of this. That is not legitimate. I was on council, and staff would never ask me in closed session to support something. That is not legitimate. It is not their job, and it is anti-democratic. So, I would like to know, what would your constituents say? And when I've asked some council members this, they laugh because you know the answer to that question. You know that if this was a public referendum, your constituents would say no to it. And so, but by the time we get to the next cycle, it'll be too late. So, I want to ask for two things. I want there to be a public referendum on this. This is a huge amount of money that is being talked about over a long period of time. And I will be sending you a proposal this week for how that can happen. The public needs to weigh in on what they want, right? And you need to then hear that before the next budget cycle and before you make any decisions. Second, I ask for partnership with the chief, the city, and the council to grow public safety together and meet material needs. I want to talk about our lanes. I have a meeting on the books with Chief Boone. And I will send you a note about Kahoots in Olympia, excuse me, Eugene, Oregon, that is a model that we should consider here in the community. My time is up. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to share a very little idea, which is that we have 59 officers right now, and they go on countless engagements with the community every day. I think that one way that we could build trust is to focus on making each one of those engagements a moment for mentorship, for de-escalation, and for care. And I don't think we need community engagement officers. I think we can have 59 community engagement officers. And if we really try to, and I, and some officers do, and so I know it's possible. If we try to come to every interaction with respect, so we're not having folks who don't want to call the police, because when they call, they end up being criminalized themselves, like we heard in one of the listening sessions. Or, you know, where people, you know, feel afraid because they think that their loved one is going to be hauled off into the criminal justice system when they just need some mental health support. So, if we, I think if we can build trust while police are doing their job, I think that's the best community engagement we can have. Thanks for listening.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee of the whole? I'm sorry, you only get to speak once. You can email any further comments you'd like.
We've got some.
So, Darcy, the clerk, will be reading email inputs. Darcy?
So, these are the inputs that directed specifically to be read into the record. Any public input that is submitted, even if not indicated to be read into the record, will be included in the meeting record in the meeting minutes. But these are the ones that explicitly asked to be read. This is from Sharon Irish. Dear council members and Mayor Marlin, thank you for your hard work and thoughtful grappling with Urbana's challenges. I would like this statement read into the record. I have lived in Urbana for 38 years and worked with various local groups over the years, including the PTA, school mentoring groups, Urbana Public Art Task Force, Urbana Historic Preservation Commission, Dreamgirls Academy, STEAM Genius, and the Campus Community Compact to accelerate racial justice. I participated in the Barry Dunn survey, and I attended one of Chief Boone's listening sessions. All that is to say, I'm invested in Urbana-Champaign and plan to attend the council meeting this evening. The Barry Dunn Public Safety Evaluation apparently has the full support of the Urbana Police Department. I understand that the Barry Dunn Report is due in the spring of 2024. Given Chief Boone's commitment to data-driven decision-making, I am puzzled by the current push to hire more police officers, even though we have not yet received feedback from the Barry Dunn effort. Since Urbana contracted with Barry Dunn to obtain presumably rigorous and broad evidence about public safety, I believe we should delay any decisions about hiring more police until further information is available. The current police proposal seems premature and not aligned with the council's decision to work with Barry Dunn. I applaud the Urbana Police Department's willingness to examine alternatives such as Eugene Oregon's Emergency Response Unit, Kahoots. She provided a link. It is also good that Urbana PD is working with local partners such as First Followers. These partnerships, which I think offer better outcomes for public safety, will also need robust funding. Given the realities of tight budgets, I urge you to hold off on voting to fund further staffing of the police. Thank you for your consideration.
This is from Mariah Ryan. Dear Urbana City Council members, I would like for this statement to be read into the record at this evening's meeting. I recently learned of a proposal to add four more officers to the Urbana Police Department in the near term with a longer-term goal of adding 15 officers. I encourage you to consider the proposal from a number of perspectives before determining whether adding more officers to the police department is the best use of limited city funds for keeping the peace in Urbana. I believe it is important to have police staff I believe it is important to have police staffing levels at a point where not much overtime is needed to ensure that officers are not overworked in an already stressful job. As many of you are aware, there may be a number of ways to ensure reasonable workloads. Of course, one of the ways is to increase the number of officers in the department. Others are to deploy mental health professionals and advocates, as well as other outreach workers to handle nonviolent incidents. Another is to support community groups committed to improving the day-to-day quality of life for residents into growing capacity for peaceable conflict resolution. I hope you will give careful consideration to the proposal and to alternative ways to achieve the shared goal of maintaining peace and order in our community. Best. Hello, city clerks and city leaders. I'm traveling today and will not be able to be at the meeting, but I would like my comment included in the record of public input. Thank you for your time and consideration. The police budget in 2021 was $10.77 million. The approved budget for the police in 2024 is $13.76 million. That is a 27.8% increase in the past three budget cycles. There is not a compelling argument that crime is going up, nor is the population of Urbana going up. I do not know why these increases are happening on an annual level at such high levels, and this mid-year amendment would make that acceleration even greater while other sectors of the city get neglected and taxes go up. The city has hired a consulting firm, Barry Dunn, to assess our police budget and services. I find it highly unprofessional that the police and city administration are considering voting on a raise for the police and a restructuring of the department before those reports are widely shared and processed by the community. I also find that language in the discussion section of the budget amendment to be incredibly worrisome regarding how it is dealing with the Barry Dunn consulting. As far as I know, there has been one survey and one public listening session conducted by Barry Dunn. Since the reports haven't come out yet with their findings, I find it to be in poor taste for the city to be citing their work. Further, I am skeptical about the conclusions that the people writing this amendment are coming to regarding Barry Dunn's work. Without a report, I only have my experience to use as a reference when evaluating the amendment's claim that, based on stakeholder feedback, Barry Dunn has independently recognized community engagement as an area of significant potential for the Urbana Police Department. I took that survey, and I went to the listening session. The survey did not ask about community engagement, so it could not have provided evidence that the community wants more police community engagement. At the listening session, constituents focused largely on the root causes of crime and on the necessity of support services and aid programs in the community. Barry Dunn offered some guidance in the conversation, but constituents were regularly frustrated by how Barry Dunn worked to center the police in those conversations and failed to provide suggestions that the members of our community found exciting. If this budget amendment came before the people at that listening session, I am confident it would have failed by a wide margin. But somehow, there is an official city document that cites stakeholder input gathered by Barry Dunn as supportive of this police budget increase. I don't know how to make this make sense. I know that there may be more that Barry Dunn has done that I have not yet seen, so it may not be that the people writing, reviewing, and approving this amendment are being intentionally misleading about their findings. But it breeds mistrust that Barry Dunn's work is being cited before it is being published, especially as it is being used in a way that contradicts what many of us have concluded based on our experience with their work. I appreciate your time and service. Ben Jocelyn.
This letter is from Julie Watkins. Please read during public comment for the December 4 meeting. In my last public input, I said I expected a budget increase for the police department because the only staff report before the first discussion to revise mayor and council goals, and here it is, a budget increase for five more positions in the Urbana Police Department. I agree with public comment last week that supported hiring more social workers so there would be staff available on weekends instead of hiring more police. That is also in agreement with other public comment that I have heard in the council meetings, in listening sessions, and in the public safety community meetings I have attended. Please consider the community engagement you have already received, which prioritized increasing budgets for services other than police. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Dear City Council members, I write to ask you to vote no on the city's current proposal to approve the hiring of four additional police officers. There is currently a study being conducted on alternative community safety models. In response to questions from WCIA about the study, Police Chief Boone stated, "We are committed to transparency and value the insights of our community members. Receiving, analyzing, and acting upon public sentiment is an important step in building and maintaining trust. Making a unilateral decision to expend funds on new officers prior to receiving the results of the survey contradicts this sentiment. Once the results of that study are released in summer of 2024, the city will have an evidence-based roadmap to reference for how to best use our city's limited funds. Now is not the time to put more armed officers on our streets. As a longtime Urbana resident, I urge the city to think beyond traditional models of community policing and use our tax dollars to create a system that is responsive to community safety and welfare based on a more humane, more equitable approach. I respectfully ask that my statement be read into the record. Thank you, Julie Watt." To the Urbana City Council, as a resident of Urbana, I would like to voice my opposition to the fiscal year 2024 budget amendment number five on police staffing. The proposed expansion of the Urbana Police Department's payroll represents a substantial enduring expenditure that is unlikely to serve its stated goal of improving the safety of our community. A city's health and verbiage comes from its accessibility, the upkeep of its infrastructure, the affordability, and modernity of its housing stock, and its direct investment in local economic activity. These aspects of municipal governance are what promote community safety most of all, and by diverting resources towards policing instead of towards accessibility, local economic activity, and affordability, Urbana would be hampering its ability to invest in those spheres in the future. I implore the city council not to tie up more of our city's funds and police salaries and to instead consider how this considerable sum of money could be invested directly in the improvement of our community. I would like my statement to be read into the record. Bram Osterhout.
I have three left.
Good evening, Urbana City Council. I am an advocate member of the Regional Advisory Council for Region Six, and I am part of a statewide coalition on efforts to fund a Kahoot-style alternative to police response for behavioral health calls to 911. This body, as well as all other regional advisory councils and the State Advisory Council, is charged with providing key steps for the implementation of the Community Emergency Services and Support Act, also known as the Stephen Edward Watts Act. Over the past year, disability activists have attempted to implement this policy in good faith, and this struggle is ongoing. At bare minimum, our hope is to change how 911 calls are responded to such that another Stephen Edward Watts would not have been shot to death by police in Illinois. This has not happened yet. The Region Six body has not held a meeting in over a quarter and is supposed to meet monthly. Meanwhile, the State Advisory Council has rejected disability activist demands to meet the bare minimum criteria. The situation I would like to outline to all activists hoping for a more equitable balance of resources in our community is that we need your help. Thank you for showing up to the Urbana City Council and voicing your support for Illinois's already-passed law to mandate behavioral health response instead of police response. We disability rights activists need your support to ensure that the law is implemented well. This also means winning over behavioral health service providers who have the power to pursue a funded behavioral health response service that does not require a police co-responder. This is called an alternative responder system. Despite repeatedly talking to fellow activists, no one has come forward as of yet to publicly comment at the Regional Advisory Council for Region Six. It is not at a time easy for members of the working class to attend, and we desperately need your voices, which would help not just our region, but also our entire state. Representatives for the city of Urbana have made promises regarding police funding. They have multiple votes on the record of where they stand. They are subsequently going to be subjected to the political theater of automatic license plate readers that is already played out in Bloomington, Peoria, Decatur, and Champaign. Thank you for residents coming together tonight. Please stay informed and do what you can sustainably and safely. Solidarity, Alan Max Axelrod. Hello, City Council members. I have lived in Urbana for most of my life, and I am writing to request that you vote no on the proposal for the city to approve the hiring of four new police officers. Crime in Urbana has decreased dramatically in the last two years without additional officers, and I believe that this is a poor use of our city's limited resources. Alongside an increasing policing budget, Urbana has recently reduced the budgets of social services, community development, and other programs that help our residents live better lives and are also known to reduce crime. We should not be expanding the presence of armed officers in Urbana, and instead, we should address community safety in a more evidence-based and humane way. Please vote no on this proposal. I would like my statement to be read into the record. Thank you, Eli A. Dear members of the Urbana City Council, I am writing to urge you to spend the $550,000 you are considering to hire four more police officers on other things. Perhaps in cooperation with the city of Champaign on research, provision, and maintenance of a pair of pods for the unhoused people who are wintering in our cities. Would you share my email about homeless pods used in Ulm, Germany with the meeting tonight? I thank you again and the people who have come to the meeting tonight for your time and attention. Shelby Washburn-Masser. Those are the extent.
Thank you, clerk. There were more letters written into City Council, a few in opposition and several in support. They were not asked to be read into the record, but they will be included in the minutes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the staff report. Nothing? Nothing, okay. Next item is new business ordinance number 2023-12-045, an ordinance regarding the Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. I hope you've been well. I'm Michelle Brooks, Labor and Employee Relations Manager, and I'm here tonight with Fannie Fletcher, Human Resources Manager.
Good evening.
Michelle, could you bring your mic closer?
Sure, I'm sorry. We're here to speak to the ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act that was recently passed. In March of 2023, the Illinois Legislature passed, and the governor signed into law this act, Illinois Paid Leave for Workers Act, and it takes effect on January 1 of 2024. The intent that the Illinois Legislature had in enacting the act is stated within the act itself. Specifically, they indicated a desire to establish a minimum paid leave standard for all workers in Illinois, to provide employment and economic security for employees who need to use paid leave off, time off, for any reason, to safeguard the welfare, health, safety, and prosperity of the people of Illinois, and to ensure employees who are not provided written policy notification requirements for use of leave are not penalized for failing to meet those requirements. The act requires employers to provide to their employees one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours worked, up to a total of 40 hours of paid leave during a 12-month period. The city of Urbana already provides paid leave for its full-time employees in an amount far in excess of that contemplated in the act, and it has consistently done so for many years. This leave is comprised of multiple categories. There is sick leave. And what I did here was I went through all the collective bargaining agreements and compared them against our city policies. So the numbers I'm giving you are the lowest threshold for our employees. As employees continue their tenure here, sick leave continues to accrue, and the longer-tenured employees start getting increasingly levels of vacation each year. So the minimum amount our full-time employees get are sick leave in a minimum amount of 69, 69 hours in the first year, and at least 96 hours per subsequent year. They get vacation leave in a minimum amount of 80 hours per year. Full-time employees are also granted with a minimum of two workdays of paid funeral and/or bereavement leave. Full-time non-bargaining unit employees and AFSMI members are granted 12 paid holidays a year, and police and firefighters are granted additional days off and other forms of leave. Part-time employees also receive paid leave at an accrual rate far in excess of that contemplated under this act. The city has a small number of temporary seasonal and less-than-half-time employees, and the city has put a mechanism in place to begin providing them with paid leave at an accrual rate consistent with that contemplated in the act. In the city, in the event the city were not to exercise its home rule authority and the authority also provided to it under the act to exempt itself from the act, it would be required to provide 40 hours of an additional category of leave per year to its paid full-time employees. That's a category separate and distinct from the sick leave and the vacation time that we already have. This has a potential cost to the city of hundreds of thousands of dollars in wages and overtime. This new form of paid leave is not subject to the notice or scheduling requirements already established in city policy or the collective bargaining agreements. This form of paid leave that's contemplated in the act can be taken at any time or any reason. These additional hours would have a significant financial and operational impact on the city. Minimum staffing requirements in the police and the fire departments, as well as after our emergency and weather responses of public works, would mean we would have to staff those hours with other employees filling in. Those who cover that staffing may be working overtime and would be paid at a rate of one and a half times their normal rate. And even in those areas where we don't have minimum staffing requirements, we could still accrue overtime or, at the very least, scheduling difficulties and slowed workflow. The council has the authority to exempt itself from the act through two mechanisms. The act does not have home rule preemption language within it, so you can invoke that power. Additionally, the act specifically states that if an employer who provides any form of paid leave to its employees and is covered by a local ordinance, it will not be subject to that act. However, this ordinance needs to be in existence before the effective date of the act, which is on or before December 31 of 2023. So essentially, if we codify that we already provide paid leave, then we're allowed to also operate under that exemption. Additionally, while not required under the act, the proposed ordinance before you contains language that requires the city to continue to provide paid leave in an amount at least equal to that contemplated under the act, although currently we do well in excess of that. Just so you know, last Monday, I reached out to representatives of our three unions, IAFF, FOP, and AFSMI. On Monday, I was able to speak with the representative from IAFF and FOP. We discussed it. I told them what we were going to be proposing. They didn't have any concerns that they wanted me to bring before the council about that. The next day, I was able to speak with the AFSMI agency, our agent, pardon me. We had a similar conversation. They did not indicate that they had questions or concerns or anything that they would like me to represent to the council on their behalf. Accordingly, we are asking the committee to advance the ordinance to council for next Monday with a recommendation for approval. Does anyone have any questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I'm trying to understand this. I've read it, but that doesn't mean that I understand it still, because this applies to all employers, right? Like the private industry, not just government organizations, right? So the way I'm reading this is that a bona fide collective bargaining agreement that states time off waives it. I don't really see if that's automatic or what, but it says maybe waived if you have that, right? And a lot of ours are under a collective bargaining agreement that specifically sells, spells out time off, right?
That is correct. It speaks to collective bargaining agreements currently in effect. So with the expiration of those collecting bargaining agreements, we would either have to get a waiver from that union to waive any assertion they might make to this new additional category of leave, and so then, or negotiate over that. So currently, we have three contracts in effect, but we'll be coming up and renegotiating AFSMI. So that means that we will have to deal with this, with this act and what the act provides for if we aren't exempted from it.
Thank you. And then, so what about the private employers? Like, the way I was reading this, it seems like we, as a city, were supposed to broaden that to employers within our municipality, not just us ourselves as an employer, right? Like, every bank or hospital or every entity that already provides time off is also in the same position, right? But they can't just write their own ordinance the way that we do.
We are not presenting anything on behalf of any other employer. And if that were something that I think employers wanted us to do, then that would be, I think, on them to come and approach the council about trying to do that. We are the, we are the employer here that we are presenting for the city itself. Like, Chicago does have an ordinance in effect that speaks to all of its employers, but that's not what we're trying to address here.
James?
Yes, thank you, thank you for this. If I could summarize the bottom line of this, and that is, for most employees in Urbana, they already receive leave far in excess of what this act is designed to provide for many employees in the state that don't get leave, right?
That is correct.
And the one exception is the part-time seasonal employees who work less than halftime who work less than halftime, and we are going to institute a process to comply with the act for those individuals, even though we are talking about exempting ourselves from following the act as it, as it guides things.
Did you want to speak to that?
We, so we, that's correct. That's, that's fair.
What's going on?
We recognize the spirit of, of what the act is trying to accomplish. We have a very small number of less-than-halftime employees who currently do not receive any paid leave, but we are in a position to put into effect a mechanism so that those employees earn up to 40 hours of paid leave per year, depending on how many hours they work.
Okay. And then, to kind of follow along Grace's question, my understanding was the act allowed home rule cities to exempt themselves from the act. Did it also provide for this home rule city to exempt private employees in their, in their jurisdiction? I don't think I saw that.
Give me just a moment. I just want, I want, I want to make sure I don't misstate any language, so I'll just go to that section. No, I believe actually the language of P would indicate that we could take that step and on behalf of all employers in, because it reads, "The provision of this act shall not apply to any employer that is covered by a municipal or county ordinance that is in effect as of the effective date that requires employers to give any form of paid leave." So then, we would have to be speaking to what all the employers do, and then that would also, I think, trigger kind of a compliance mechanism that, you know, we would have to do some form of verification, I think.
Okay. And I know this isn't specifically to the, the thing that we're talking about doing, which is for us. But the way you read that, it sounds like it's intended to allow cities to require leave with, with home rule for their employers instead of or in place of what the act, it doesn't, doesn't sound like it's authorizing us to exempt employers from this.
I want to make sure I'm tracking. Well, I, we only did write this, and one thing I will say is that this is a little bit of a nebulous and somewhat confusing act in certain, in a certain, I guess, when you read it. The Illinois Department of Labor has recognized that and was supposed to be coming up with guidelines to give a lot of clarity and guidance on some of these issues. They have not done so, and we are coming up against the deadline for the act starting. So I will say that the Illinois Municipal League did a lot of research, and they are recommending that this is kind of the way that municipalities proceed. And of course, in the event that the legislature went back and changed or modified or clarified anything, then we would need to comply with that law. But I think, yes, at this point, I'm thinking of an ordinance up in Chicago that does speak to requirements regarding paid leave, and that's not where we've elected to go with this ordinance, because we know our own state of leave. But I think I personally didn't want to presume to know the state of other employers.
Because I can, I can see some really interesting conundrums, because there are several large employers in the city of, in the city of Urbana that I don't think the intent of what the, the state was doing was for us to be able to let them off the hook of paid leave, if that's, if that makes sense.
I think that the way that it's written is that they can only get off the hook for paid leave if we put in something requiring them to give some form of paid leave.
Okay, that's what, that's, so, so we're not exempted. We don't have the power to exempt others from this completely.
Correct.
And we're only asking to exempt it ourselves because we are going to meet or exceed it.
Yeah, correct. I apologize. I wasn't tracking. Paragraph P is, in, in section 15, is the one that you would want to turn to. It's really, it's kind of dense, but what I take from that is that if you put an ordinance in place, it has to ensure that there is paid leave in place that is at least providing the same amount of leave at a minimum. And there's other sections of this, too, that speak to the fact that they're not trying to discourage employers such as us who already offer more leave and more generous benefits. But yes, there is a minimum threshold that would have to be in the ordinance if we were going to go ahead and try to exempt everybody but else, which is also in part why I put in the language there that says that we will never go below the threshold that's the calculus of the act.
And, and so the bottom line is, we can't act in a way that alleviates private employers in our city limits from complying with this?
That, that is correct. And I think the thing that I was thinking was cleanest, too, is just speak to us, and then the act will still control those other employers.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
Are there any more questions?
So you're saying there, there is an exemption for employees that already have more than 40 days leave? Because I'm not seeing that.
I, I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm saying that for other, say, a bank that already gives their employees also 70 hours of time off, whatever, are you saying that they would not be subject to also give the additional time under this act if they already provide that minimum?
If there is an ordinance that speaks to that, which this ordinance doesn't, we don't speak to private employers. So something that basically, I think, is a, a legal mechanism, right, in place? So if it's not going to be the state law, it would be the ordinance that would control and that would require its employees to continue to offer at least that minimum threshold in the act.
And I just don't understand why we don't consider that for, like, I understand the point of this act and for employees who have no time off or very little. I think that this absolutely makes sense. There are a lot of employees who do already have a good package of time off and benefits and things. And that it seems that the point is not giving additional time to those who already have it, but providing to those who don't. So saying that we understand, as a city who already gives a full package of time off, that we don't need to increase it. So it just seems to make sense to think about all the other businesses in our municipality that might be in the same boat, that already have a package of time off. The way I'm reading this, it doesn't say anything about a municipality making this exemption for itself. It just talks about employers within the municipality covered under an ordinance. So I'm just, yeah, I'm curious on how we leave the other employees, because it sounds like there's not a mechanism that they're automatically exempt if they already meet the minimum. Is that right? Like, it's not under the act, say, a bank already gives 70 hours of time off, so they're not required to give additional.
So there are other provisions that the act calls for that don't, that relate not just to the number of hours, but also to how those hours are requested and the reasons that they're taken. So I think it's important to, to, to point out that just providing the hours is not enough to meet the requirements of the act. They also have to be able to, to take the leave for any reason, and they don't need to, so they don't need to give a reason when they request the hours. And their, any other employee's policies would need to be in line with other provisions of the act and not just the hours. I think that would be difficult for us to ascertain whether or not every other employer in the city of Urbana's policies meet those requirements as well.
And to jump off of Famy's point, I think one of the anxieties, then, that I would have is what would be the impact on the city? Because if we exempt from the act under our own ordinance, we are the enforcement mechanism, right? So then that administratively, how do we enforce that? If there is a violation, it is the city's ordinance that's being violated, and that brings enforcement mechanism back to us. Whereas if we don't speak to the other employers, they will be controlled by the state act, and the enforcement mechanism then would be the state.
Any further questions for staff? James.
I would like to move approval of ordinance number 2023-12-045, an ordinance regarding the Paid Leave for All Workers Act to City Council for, for approval on consent.
Second.
Okay, it's been, excuse me. It's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice that ordinance number 2023-12-045, an ordinance regarding the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, be moved on to the City Council for approval on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Jay.
Yeah, thank you. I have, in other roles, also heard, understand how complicated this and how little guidance there is. So I just want to say thank you for, for bringing this and making sure that we are capturing the employees who weren't being caught by our existing policies. I think that's a really important addition. I'm a little sad that we're not able to easily allow the flexibility that comes with this act, but I think that as a municipality where we do have those minimum staffing requirements, it's not as straightforward as it might be for other employees or employers or others. So I appreciate the, the quick attention to this, an important issue, and look forward to hopefully more of our community members getting the time off that they deserve under this act.
Mary Alice.
I, I agree with both Jay and James in terms of how you presented the information. I appreciate it. Reading through Illinois acts is always a little challenging sometimes to understand what the legislature was attempting to do. I actually don't think it's appropriate for us to be able to apply this to all businesses in Urbana. I think that's a very long time to gather information from employers. So limiting it just specifically to the city and making sure that, that everybody who works for the city gets the rights as Illinois resident, I think is the appropriate method for this. So I'll be in favor of this.
Any further discussion? Say none. Will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2023-12-046, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five, police staffing.
So I'm going to start this out with just some quick financial information, understanding that the, the meat of this is going to come from the chief and the deputy chief. So first of all, the budget amendment that you're looking at would increase staffing in the police department by four positions. That is one deputy chief position and three additional police officers in an office of community relations. This did come up earlier, so I just, I just want to say this is really unrelated to the property tax levy. It's, we're not necessarily, we're not levying more money in order to, to do this thing that we're proposing here. The annual recurring cost of these changes would be $542,000 annually. Also, looking at our policy limits in relation to the budget, we would have a remaining fund balance after some amounts reserved for future expenditures, which would be 27.55% of recurring expenditures. As you know, our policy calls for a fund balance of at least 25% of recurring expenditures. And our estimated recurring expenditures as a percentage of recurring revenues would be 97.24%, which was with, which is within our 98.5% limit also established in the financial policies that have been approved by the city council. Finally, because this is a budget amendment, you all know that this will require, when it goes on to the regular council, Agenda Six affirmative votes in order to pass. So with that, I'm going to give this to the chief.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you again for affording me an opportunity to speak to you all. To our citizens of Urbana, I certainly appreciate your passion. I, I understand your concerns. About two months ago, I created a draft that was specifically for the city of Urbana with respect to 21st century policing. That draft has been submitted to our council members. I, I think it's important that you all take a look at that, because some of the very concerns that you raised tonight is covered in that draft. Things such as transparency, deployment to mental calls, CIT, de-escalation. I'm going to find a way for you all to take a look at that, but in the same spirit that you delivered tonight, I would like for you to volunteer some of your services. I want to give you my phone number in the event, once you read it and you're willing to participate, I'm willing to listen. My number is 217-974-1954. And again, the draft is based on President Obama's 21st Century Task Force. Shortly after Ferguson, the best police chiefs and academics, community activists, lawyers, judges, they got together and came up with six pillars. I put together a draft that's unique to Urbana. And again, I'm going to make it so that you can review this yourselves, because again, a lot of the issues that you highlighted tonight is covered in that draft. I await you all helping us make this a better city and a better police department, and I'll wait your phone calls. So with that, you know, we just completed a series of listening sessions. And one of the common denominators I kept hearing was, what is community engagement? How does it impact crime? How does it impact relationships? I've heard that over and over and over. And perhaps I did a clumsy job in trying to explain it. So just bear with me. I just want you to look at a couple videos that illustrate just that. The first video is a video that started in 2018 where police departments across the nation were challenging each other to a lip sync contest. We, Norfolk, Virginia was the national champs. Cedric the Entertainer provided us with $100,000. The $100,000 helped us to continue our work within our struggling communities, particularly our Black and Brown communities. Play. That was just a sample of what community engagement looked like. Again, the idea of sharing that with you, are you going to listen to me? The idea in sharing that with you is where the proceeds went. This next video highlights the issue with our young African-Americans in law enforcement in terms of how we interface with our young African-Americans. There's no sacred place more sacred than the barber shop. Black barbers throughout the city of Norfolk came to me wanting to better the relationship between police and the community. We started with six barber shops, and four continued throughout the program, which is still going on. still going on. In addition to that, we built relationships with our community activists who helped us at the end of the school year, or the beginning of the school year, I should say, host free haircuts and free backpacks in addition to our business association helping us, in addition to our Black fraternities and sororities. This program went national. We were able, every year, to provide over 400 haircuts free. In addition to that, a free backpack. There's nothing more disruptive than a young kid in a classroom on the first day of school who is unset. We did this so that young person can go to school on the first day of school without being teased. Here are some of the authentic conversations.
Now with a trip to the barber shop, which is a major neighborhood intersection for conversation, Norfolk police are trying to reach the younger customers and build relationships that go well beyond the barber's chair. Ten on your side, Deanna Betnesshi takes us to the 5O and Fades event.
Multiple officers were inside the Cut and Edge Barber Shop here in Norfolk, working on building a stronger relationship with today's youth. Building relationships--
My man, you feel that same way?
I do.
--is what Corporal Ollie Williams and Officer Brett Rousey love to do.
He just got accepted into grad school.
That's what I'm talking about, baby. Good, man. Good, good, good. Make sure you give back because I see some youth that don't understand what you're going through, that they need that. They need that. So be that mentor.
The officers were at the Cut and Edge Barber Shop as part of the 5O and Fades program, where officers go into barber shops to try and break down barriers between police and the public. The program started last year. Officers will go to different barber shops the first and third Saturday of each month. They say they've seen a change in the dialogue from when the initiative first started.
Seeing us competitive, getting them used to us, and then they can ask us those questions that they have that maybe six months ago, they were like, no, I wouldn't ask.
Mother Katie Cannon brought her three boys in and says she felt comfortable asking questions about how police interact with people who have autism.
Of course, like I was talking to the officer a few minutes ago, my oldest son is autistic. And I definitely wanted to get him to understand, you know, what I feel as a mother, that, you know, him communicating with my son and my son understanding that it's okay to talk to police.
It's awesome when we can come onto a program like this and talk to a parent that needs information about that, to find out exactly how and if we're trained to deal with them.
Officers say after coming out to barber shops a few times a month, they get to know those inside on a personal level.
Not only my officer, Officer Rousey, I'm Brett.
A way they say brings the community together. If you'd like to find out other locations where officers will be tomorrow, we've posted them on wavy.com. Reporting in Norfolk, Deanna Betnesshi, Ten on Your Side.
So you heard that the mother said something about her son being autistic. Those are opportunities for us as an agency to develop programs. We developed a program for officers after she said that, in terms of if you go on a call, you may not readily recognize that the individual is autistic. So we got with professionals and we trained all our officers to notice those signs so that we would not inflict harm. In addition to that, shortly after any local or national incident, the barber shop officers were deployed into those barber shops and they had the difficult conversation. And I'll say this, doing George Floyd, Norfolk, because of our efforts, never saw any burning, any looting. We had more protests because we allowed them to express their First Amendment privilege, but we were unscathed. Next.
And now to Norfolk and the new crime fighting tool police are putting on the road.
Yeah, it's done up in the department's new blue and white color scheme, but this isn't just your average police cruiser. The department bought an ice cream truck, yeah, right there. They say this is not just about preventing crime, it's getting a lot of support from the community.
And before you think this is some sort of gimmick, a criminal justice expert says it could bridge the gap between cops and the community one popsicle at a time. Madeline Schmidt has the story all near tonight.
It's brilliant.
Can a waffle cone, two scoops, and cherry on top prevent crime?
These initiatives actually are quite central to what policing is.
ODU Vice Provost and Criminal Justice Professor Brian Payne says yes, because the people serving up this cold treat--
It's our latest tool that we've put in our toolbox for community engagement.
--are the same people putting cuffs on bad guys. Norfolk Police is launching its new owned and operated ice cream truck Saturday.
Enforcing the law is actually just one part of what police officers do. There's also maintaining order and serving the community. And it's these sorts of activities that help to show that police are a part of the community and not apart from the community.
Payne says by being out and about and getting to know people, the public is encouraged to speak up when a crime occurs. But this truck is also stopping criminal activity before it even happens.
A great deal of research shows that people will think twice about their behavior, that the very presence of police officers in the community sends a signal to potential offenders.
So whether it's a bicycle patrol, a reset walk, a lip sync video--
It absolutely is more than selling a few ice cream cones. It's about building relationships. It's about protecting the community. It's about doing what makes all of us safer.
Now, Madeline, certainly an interesting approach.
Absolutely.
So when can folks see this ice cream truck tomorrow?
Well, as I mentioned, Saturday, so it does start tomorrow. Norfolk Police says the truck will start at Berkeley Park. That's at noon.
I want to correct something the anchor said. We didn't actually buy a truck. The original owner was selling drugs in one of our challenging neighborhoods, and we ran a sting on him while he was selling drugs, and we confiscated his ice cream truck. All right, so the next video kind of speaks for itself. I had a sector in Norfolk that had 64 churches. Folks, you are being very rude. I had a section in Norfolk that was one of my most violent sectors. There were 64 churches in that sector, and I met with clergy in order to address the violence that was happening outside their church. Let it play.
One has a badge, the other may have a Bible. The Norfolk Police Department and a community partner will soon resume the clergy patrol. Ten on Your Side's Regina Mobley joins us with a look at how the program aims to take back the community. Regina?
Well, now, first launched in 2016, when 48 people were killed in Norfolk, the clergy patrol is a partnership where officers travel with men and women of the cloth. It was suspended because of the pandemic, but will soon return. 63 people were killed in Norfolk last year.
In 2018, Ten on Your Side brought you along to show you an innovative approach to taking back the community. It is called the clergy patrol.
I'm Antipas Harris. I'm a local pastor working with the police department.
That's Dr. Antipas Harris of the Urban Renewals Center, walking the beat with a Norfolk police officer. Clergy patrol was suspended because of the pandemic, but Dr. Harris says he recently called on the interim police chief to restore the program as crime is on the increase. This is how it works.
On Friday and Saturday nights, when they respond to calls, we're with them. Of course, if there are dangerous type situations, we would only come in after the situation is deemed safe. We represent the community. We come up out of the community, we represent the community, and we seek to mediate conflict, de-escalate situations, humanize the citizens, help them feel that we actually care about their humanity.
Resumption of the program will require additional recruitment and training for what Dr. Harris calls a new kind of church.
The faith community is very concerned about how do we create a model that could help with public safety? So how can we be part of the solution?
He also believes the patrols will reduce incidents where officers, lawfully or unlawfully, use potentially deadly force.
I can only imagine in Memphis, Tennessee, when those five police officers stopped Tyree Nichols, if a clergy patrol was present, he would not be dead today.
Dr. Harris will train other members of the cloth who want to join this effort. Clergy Patrol 2023 could launch in April. For more information on how members of the clergy can volunteer for the program, see this story on wavy.com. Regina?
All right. And lastly, in our public housing sections in the city of Norfolk, a lot of fathers were missing in action. We partner again with our fraternities, sororities, the housing authority, as well as our businesses, to put on a father-daughter dance for those young girls. Not only that, the female officers on my department became mentors for these young girls after these events. And everything you're seeing thus far is still going on, so play.
Cops and Curls is an annual event that we've been doing to help boost the self-esteem of the young ladies in the city of Norfolk.
Most of our focus has been on young males, males within the community.
The young boys are doing sports and they're doing this. And you recognize that women, young girls, they're very important to our society. And if we don't boost their esteem before they get to those teenage years, you can be pulled either way.
You can give time, you can give money, but when you reach someone and you touch their heart, that's magical.
The women and men of this department thank an awful lot of you.
For them, it's an awesome experience because they know that the focus is on them and that somebody cares about them and wants to see them have a good time, encourage them, and inspire them to career awareness or higher education.
There's food, there's activities, there's love like they've never experienced before. We are here to protect and serve, and sometimes serve meaning getting a little bit out of your comfort zone, going on the dance floor, making a fool of yourself, okay? You know, I can do a little bit.
All right. So, look at that. Those programs, I became chief December of 2016. Within a couple months, I started implementing those programs. Prior to that, we had about five programs. I added 20 additional. All of them are actionable partnerships. So I hope that you all behind me, particularly those that were commentating, commentary during my presentation, when you read the Urbana 21st Century Opportunity, I hope you are willing to participate with the same passion you delivered your messages tonight. Next. All right. We're going to go over the staffing overview, the Urbana Police Chief Search Process. As you know, or you may not know, during this process, I was flown out here two or three times, perhaps four times. The very first visit I had, I recognized that there was a staffing issue. I made that very clear to--
Point of order, we have the chair chairing the meeting. That's not your responsibility in this role. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Siggen?
We have the chair chairing the meeting.
I heard a disturbance, so I just turned around. That's part of my job. Okay. So my visits here, at first blush, I recognized that we were short personnel. The very first time I met with each of you, I let you know that as well. Where we are today is no secret. I expressed that to all of you, and I'm not certain why the energy today. Anyway, meeting with staff, they highlighted that they were understaffed, that they had no opportunities for community engagement because of such. They had very limited opportunity to take off because of such. In addition to that, injuries and sick leave only exacerbated their opportunities to enjoy family life. And I can tell you, this generation enjoy their time. They'd rather be home with their families or friends than work. And what you'll end up having is losing officers because you've worked them to death. So right now, we're about one or two ankle springs away to doing just that. We currently have several officers that are injured. We have some in the academy. But right now, the women and men of this department are hollin' on. And having been here for four months, I don't understand where all the negative energy is coming from towards these officers. I've been in this business 32 years, and I've seen misconduct. 15 years of my career was investigating misconduct. I've seen officers sent to prison for misconduct. I've seen officers lose their job for misconduct. I have terminated over 80-plus officers for misconduct. I've seen a department average 200-plus complaints for misconduct. I come here, I see none of this. I'm sure you have your issues, but I don't understand the negative energy. I don't. So I'm having a hard time rationalizing this negative energy towards your rank and file, folks. They are doing a darn good job on very limited resources, and they watch you. And I'm not going to sit here and let people besmirch them when it's not warranted. They expect me to stand up for them, and I'm going to do it. Now, if they misbehave, I'm going to hold them accountable, but I hadn't seen that just yet, which is why I'm confused at the dart throwing. These people are compassionate, they're going into their pockets helping people. I thought you wanted a 21st Century Police Department. You're talking to a chief who has seen both sides of it. I'm not just making up stuff. I don't see the misconduct that you guys are highlighting, and it's not fair to use something that happened in another state or neighboring city to justify your position. That's feeble, and they don't deserve that. You picked the wrong chief if you expect me to allow folks to throw darts at them when it's not warranted. I'm not going to stand for that. I'm going to yield right now because I feel myself getting warm. So meeting with the community, I met with more community members than was back here in the last four months. And one of the things they all said, we need a better relationship with our police department. Eight out of 10 times, that's what they said. Now, there were some that said, you know, some of them thought that they could behave better. When asked for examples, to be honest with you, they really couldn't give me any examples. But I'm sure they had examples, and I didn't hold that against them. So, four months in, I'm looking at leadership. I'm looking at there are no clear lanes of workflow, there are no clear lanes of accountability, ownership with respect to workflow, there's no clear lanes of opportunity for growth. For an example, you have lieutenants tasked with 119 different responsibilities. There's no way in the world you can professionally grow when you're trying to handle administrative issues, operational issues, patrol issues. They're limiting themselves and their opportunity to be your next chief. So I looked at opportunity-- So, I looked at opportunities to, how do we reshape this organization based on best I had staff interviews, got their input, and before you is a new org chart. I want to say something about Barry Dunn. I've worked with Barry Dunn in Norfolk. They did a staffing study for Norfolk as well. I had no communications with them with respect to deputy chief and et cetera. You guys hired them way before you hired me. So, the deputy chief position shouldn't have any bearings on your decision. Deputy chief position is merely my ask because we are flawed in terms of workflow, chain of command, and opportunity for our women and men to grow. the ask, if you would, is, let me find my notes here. Let's start with the deputy chief of operations. I'm not asking for to bring someone from the outside. Those individuals are currently within this organization. Deputy chief of operations would be in charge of shaping the culture of operation and providing operational oversight. In addition to that, he will assist the deputy chief of investigation and administration. While assisting that deputy chief, that deputy chief will be the gentleman to my immediate left, Rich Searls. He will have the responsibility of shaping whoever I select as a deputy chief. In addition to that, that new deputy chief will have responsibility for accreditation. We're currently not accredited. It's important, if you are going to be a 21st century police department, to be accredited. We're currently not accredited. I think it's important that we get there to safeguard the police department as well as the city from future litigations in the event something goes south. We just started a new crime management process. The deputy chief of operations will also have a role in that. I think you guys have seen the monthly and weekly deployments of crime data that we provide you. That was something that did not exist until I got here. I was happy to say that the lieutenants and deputy chief have, and the crime analyst has embraced this new process, and they have made it work. In addition to that, I'm not comfortable after 5:00 PM with a sergeant being the point of contact or the tip of the spear for the city, as well as on the weekends. The deputy chief of operations will devise a process where we will have someone after 5:00 PM during the week, and on the weekends, hire than a sergeant in the event something happens. We are starting a strategic plan. We don't have one here. The deputy chief of operations will have a role in that as well. We have already reached out to the NAACP as well as others connected to the Ten Share Principles to help draft that. The deputy chief of operations will also be required to overview policy renewals as well as work with Barry Dunn. Now, shifting over to the deputy chief of investigations and admin support, I should say administration support, not operational support. In a perfect world, folks, there would be three deputy chiefs. There would be one right there in the middle, but I understand that we are, we don't have the funds to have three deputy chiefs. Rich Searls has shown me that he's capable of overseeing the investigative unit as well as the administrative unit. So, he'll be handling that. This is going to be a very busy branch when you consider the additional things we're trying to implement. 80% of the ask, i.e. three officers, will be geared towards 21st century policing for the Urbana Police Department. Rich Searls will oversee the Office of Community Relations, which will house officer peer support, the chaplains, clergy patrol, accreditation, crime management, use of force oversight, community engagement, as well as what he's been doing already, handling the Barry Dunn study. In addition to that, the strategic plan. I asked of these three additional officers to help do some of the things that was presented to you tonight via video. They're gonna be partnering with Courage Connect. We've identified there's some opportunity there. They're going to be partnering with some of our youth organizations that I identified here in Urbana. They're going to be fostering community block watches where it's needed in some of those neighborhoods where crime is somewhat intense. They're gonna be partnering with our clergy patrol and doing some of the ride-alongs, as well as some of the barbers that are willing to start the barbershop conversations. As we develop the Office of Community Relations, I will guarantee you this, there are going to be more partnerships. Also, we are saving space in that office for Barry Dunn's recommendations, while I am almost certain they're going to have a recommendation that support non-sworn personnel assisting us in some of our initiatives. Okay, with that, I'll yield for your questions.
Are there any questions for the chief? Gia.
Yeah, so, this is maybe more of an Elizabeth question, but where is this money coming
So, currently, in the general fund, we have some excess capacity, limited, but there is excess capacity, which is why, when I explained the numbers to you at the start, I kind of referenced our policy limits, so we can do this from the general fund within those limitations.
James.
Remind me again, what, thank you, chief, for the presentation, and remind me again when we are anticipating a message from Barry Dunn about their recommendations?
So, originally, it was scheduled late November. It's been modified, obviously. To be honest, I don't know at this point, because it, the goalpost has been moved a couple of times, and I'm reluctant to give you a definitive date because of such. And I'm not saying anything negative toward Barry Dunn. I think every time they meet with community members, more is added to their, their plate, so to speak. So, I don't know the answer to that just yet.
So, so, one of the concerns I have is that what's built into this is, looks like it's acquiring space because we're out of, out of space where this would go. And what, I do agree with some of the feedback that we told the public that we were using this Barry Dunn process to inform us on our staffing. And one of the challenges I see with going out and moving with these four at this moment and acquiring space is if that recommendation comes out, and as you've alluded, it will probably recommend additional non-sworn staff or some alternate staffing options, we would need space if we intend to follow that advice as well. And so, I would like to see if there's a way that we can hold on a conversation on this until we know more about what the Barry Dunn outcome looks like, so we know what's included based on what you've foreseen, because I know you've, you've looked at this and you've taken your experience with this consultant into your thought process. But I would like to know, before we're renting space and deciding how much space we need, that we're, we're doing the right thing.
So, Rich, just remind me, they're gonna circle back around with us in a couple weeks. I, I'm comfortable, based on my relationship with them, based on my experience, that this ask is nowhere near what their recommendation's going to be. I'm 100% comfortable with that.
Gia, or, sorry, Mary Alice.
So, you know, you used a bar chart, a line chart with the, the number of crimes that have gone down in Norfolk. So, I'm wondering if you could provide some ideas on metrics in terms of the community engagement group beyond that? Do you have any thoughts about that?
When you say the community engagement group, you're talking about in Norfolk or the one I'm trying to...
The one they're trying to build here.
Well, well, it depend, it will depend on what type of partnerships we're able to establish. In Norfolk, there's clearly some that we could measure, i.e. the reading program. One of the things we measured was, can you read at the end of the school year? The other piece is crime reduction, particularly, I'll give you an example here. Right now, we have a, an issue with domestic violence, and we're trying to partner with Courage Connect. If we could come up with some type of mechanism, machinery, so that, one, we're not continuously going there, and, two, folks are getting the services that they need, that would be one way of measuring that particular partnership. With respect to clergy patrol, we've already developed a map that houses or identifies the various churches in the city of Urbana, and some of those churches, the crime is up. And the metric for that would be this crime goes down. So, again, I tried to create initiatives where you can measure almost all of them. You know, you often heard me say coffee with a cop, and that's, that's fine, but that's a one-off. So, those two examples immediately come to mind. I'm sure there're going to be more. It's gonna depend on the partnerships that we're able to develop as, as time goes on. And I am almost certain that we will because I'm having these conversations with various people. Now, I just have to identify folks that are committed to it. A lot of people say a lot of things. I'm just trying to identify those organizations that are committed to it, so.
Yeah, and I have one more question, is that okay? So, when you went over the deputy chief position, I'm trying to make sure I understand that you're, it sounds more like you're doing a promotion instead of hiring out for that position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, does that mean that you would backfill whatever position the person would be leaving to take the deputy chief position?
So, it's a domino effect, one moves up, the other one moves up. Okay, so, you're currently operating that way right now, okay, before I even got here. So, when I got here, the structure is kind of that way now. We just hadn't officially promoted anyone. We've interviewed folks, and depending on how they perform, and depending on y'all's input in terms of do we go for it with this, I'll, I'll make a selection. But yes, to answer your question, one moves up, it's backfilled with someone else, and it's a domino effect through and through.
So, in, in the budget request, you had, there's some line items for the deputy chief. I'm assuming that that's just the promotional piece, right? The difference between...
Sarah, I think, I think what the chief was explaining, somebody's gonna get promoted to that deputy chief position, but then, then there's gonna be movement all kind of down the chain. So, somebody's, that person's probably gonna come from a lieutenant position, sergeant's gonna move to lieutenant, patrol officer's gonna move to a sergeant, and then we're gonna hire, there's gonna be a new patrol officer at the bottom. So, it truly is, there is addition, there is, there is a promotion, but there's a whole new position associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
What?
I'm sorry.
It's up to you, Sean.
Cherise, please, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to keep things going. I'm interested in growth of the, our crisis response team. Do you have any plans for that? Because that is something that we start, that we've started, and it's, it's so small and, and I know, you know, the officer in charge is doing the best she can to try to stay ahead of stuff. I would be interested in knowing how we're gonna grow that.
Yes, I, I think there's an opportunity to grow that. That's one nugget that I'm waiting on Barry Dunn. We have talked about that. I envision, based on cost for services, that, that unit growing, whether it's sworn or non-sworn. Most likely, it's going to be non-sworn, but I don't want to get ahead of Barry Dunn because that is one particular topic we have spoken about.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like some clarification on what Barry Dunn information is cited in the memo, because the city council has not received any information nor has the public, and I find it highly problematic that we're quoting from information that is not publicly available.
I'm, I'm not sure what specifically you're referring to.
Sure, so, in the council memo in this proposal, it states, let me get to the right Sorry for the delay.
Right underneath the org chart.
Under the org chart, thank you all. Let me get back down there. Okay, so, it says, "Based on stakeholder feedback," which I don't know what feedback is being referenced, "as well as experience in other jurisdictions, both Chief Boone and Barry Dunn have independently recognized community engagement as an area of significant potential for their Urbana Police Department." And that is not information that is available, that has been provided to the city council nor to the public, so I would like to know what information from Barry Dunn is being cited.
I, I think what that is meaning to reference is our historical partnership between Barry Dunn and myself.
Is that the correct interpretation from other city staffers? Is there information that has been obtained from Barry Dunn that is not available to others?
I would say the only other, the only, no, no, there's nothing in writing, but when, when they visit, we have conversations. So, it's just, I would say, more of a dialogue where they would say, oh, these are things that we're seeing.
I think that's misleading wording to word it that way in this memo.
Cherise.
Thank you. A few questions kind of related here. I was wondering if some of these other changes in the department are already being implemented, like the clergy control and this community engagement or Office of Community Relations, if those things are already being implemented?
No, ma'am. There's been conversations regarding individuals that want to participate, but... There's been conversations regarding individuals that want to participate, but nothing's been implemented.
And would there be a input process for public and council before those would be implemented?
Would there be what, ma'am?
An input process for the public and council? Like, would we talk about these things before you create these divisions?
no.
And I was wondering if I could have clarification on what was mentioned in one of these two-by-twos two months ago. Carol stated that there was flex money already in the budget in anticipation for this request. And I was wondering if we could have a budget clarification, if there was already money, flex money in the budget for an expansion of the department unbeknownst to council?
I wouldn't say that there was money in the budget specifically with that intent. I suspect what she was saying is, we know that in the general fund budget, there is some flexibility because we were below our policy limit on recurring expense and we had enough fund balance in order to, to be able within our policy limitations to support additional expense, whether it be this or something else.
Thank you.
And I will acknowledge that Elizabeth is correct since I could give you the interpretation of what I said rather than her, but that's, that's a fair representation.
So you meant flex money in the general fund, but that wasn't already allocated?
For anything. It was that we had capacity, as Elizabeth described.
I see. Thank you for the clarification. And I had just one more quick one. I was wondering if that 21st Century Policing draft that you shared with us all privately in meetings, if that was available publicly?
So when I send you information, whether it's data surrounding your ward, surrounding 21st Century Policing or any other thing, I'm doing it as a courtesy. I recognize that you probably have not received information such as that in the past. You are free to use it as you see.
The question is, is that publicly available?
I will make it available.
So it's not currently, but will be for the public to see? Because you mentioned a few times this draft of 21st Century Policing. I'm not sure if everyone has access to that.
I was just hoping that you all would share it with your constituents.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
I, I'd like to divide the question. I feel like we are talking about two different things. So I'd like to divide the question where one component is the deputy chief of police operations, the other component is the Office of Community Relations. I don't know what I need to do to do that.
Is that a motion?
You would need a motion to divide, and then you would take each item separately with its own.
Can you state that as a motion?
I will move that we divide the question when question one is on the deputy chief of operations and question two is the Office of Community Relations.
I'll second that.
It's been motion to divide the question for ordinance number 2023-12-046, where the first question being, doing a budget amendment for deputy chief. And then the, the second question would be doing a budget amendment for three officers within the Office of Community Relations. Is there any discussion? Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. I want to, I want to preface this by saying that, saying that there's an interest in waiting for the Barry Dunn survey that we commissioned, that was put into the budget in the summer of 2021. So this is something that it has taken a while to select the right firm, and that process is still ongoing. But our community has been waiting for that response for a long time. And to me, it does not feel appropriate to move forward. And I would say the same thing if we were talking about adding recurring expenses in terms of the, the fire department too, because that got added to the study. I don't feel comfortable making any recommendations or approving any changes to our current public safety staffing until we have the results of that study. So I will not be voting to break the question because I will not be voting for this.
Grace?
Thank you. Give my thoughts on all of it because it's all kind of, whether the question's divided or not, I'm not in support of adding these new positions. I agree with Jaya's main sentiment that we need to do the study first. We've been working on this for two years to have a holistic, community, research-based approach, and it seems highly inappropriate to come in and ask for this now. I think that it's not community-informed, collaborative, or holistic solution, not fiscally responsible with the amount, this is going to limit our future ability to create these programs that we might want. We're almost at the limit of reoccurring expenses. I think we need to wait until the results of the Barry Dunn study, which may have its own issues. I think we need meaningful community input and partnerships and a public referendum to ask the public. Would all be great things to do before committing ourselves to these resources that are going to be there indefinitely. And, sorry, distracted with the smirk there. So I think that we need non-police response services expanded and that this will limit our future options. I vote, I plan to vote no, and I really appreciate the public coming out. I think that all perspectives are important. I think that each one of us on council have different perspectives that represent the perspectives of different people in the community, and we need to respect those different opinions. I agree that public safety and well-being are important, and I also don't want officers to work 16-hour-long days and be overworked. Unfortunately, that's not what this proposal is asking for. It's not asking for logistical needs of operations. This is asking for expansions. And I think if we're going to invest in expansions, we need to have a holistic approach that is more collaborative and that can be community-focused. I understand you're coming at everything with a police perspective, so you're going to have police solutions. And I think if we really want community-based solutions, we're going to have to do it more community-focused. So I plan to vote no for all of these expansions at this time.
James?
Yeah, I'm going to speak to the division of the question, which is the point of debate right now. I, I understand from the structural design of the department how the deputy chief fits into this. I think it's about how we're going to transform our police force. I, I don't know that I'm ready with any other expansion because I do want the Barry Dunn information and know what the long-term picture looks like. So I'm going to support dividing the question so we have an opportunity to vote on the structural change for leading the police force that is included in here.
And Mary Alice?
I guess I should have told everybody why I divided the question, but James kind of said what I was going to say, which is, I, in one hand, I see kind of a new group within the police department, and on the other hand, I see the organization of the entire department. And I respect both previous interim Chief Searls and current Chief Boone's information in terms of looking over the strategy of how that department is organized. We've always talked about how the staffing have way too much to do and how can we better organize ourselves. And so one of the reasons, actually, there's many reasons that we agreed to hire Chief Boone, but one of them was so that we could look at that structure with an eye to figuring out how we would be able to organize ourselves a little bit better, streamline services, et cetera. So I feel like that is a logistical need, to Grace's point. I think that the Office of Community Relations is separate. I'm happy to talk about that one as well, but I, I, that's why I'm dividing the question is because one's logistical and one's no.
Is there any further question, discussion? Sharice?
I, I want to kind of piggyback to what Mary Alice was saying, but the other thing is this, is that we hired this gentleman to help us to be more, to have more organization, to have more, he has the expertise that he has. I'm not in law enforcement, and before this, I was in education. I'm not going to question Chief Boone's abilities regarding his organization of law enforcement, as I would not expect him to question my organization of a classroom. I think that it is a smart idea for us to have because we already have our, a deputy chief, Chief Searls, who also served as the interim chief. And we also have another deputy, interim deputy chief, which is Matt Bean, who has been also helping immensely with Chief Boone's getting to know the community. I am not going to fault this gentleman for actually a lack of participation from some of the public. I know, I don't know about your listening sessions, but my listening sessions, there are two people that showed up. He has tried to engage the community, and he has set up different meeting times and with council people, with all of us, to get input from the community before tonight. So he can't be accused of not trying to engage the community because he has done everything he can to engage the community. It is incumbent upon our community, who also have valid points, to show up during this time, not just show up during council time, to, you know, throw out profane opinions about something that they don't even know anything about because they didn't show up in the first place. I would really like to see there, there be a more organized force that is trying to engage the community. And that's what I see Chief Boone trying to implement, even with the expenditures that many of us want to complain about. We, you have to give a person a chance. Now, there is something with the Barry Dunn thing. We do want to, I do want to see what the Barry Dunn, what their recommendations might be. But he has experience with this particular company that we don't have. And I think that given the experience that he has as a, as a chief, as a law enforcement officer in the 33 years and working with Barry Dunn, he probably has a good idea of what's going to be, what's going to be coming down the pipe some kind of way. This is a small community, isn't it? I mean, we're, we're tiny compared to what he's had to work with in the past. I don't think we need to, I think, I think, I think we need to, to actually, I don't know, actually think about the fact that he may know what he's doing because he's been doing it for a very long time. And I think it's an insult to him to, for us to second guess everything that he recommends. I'm not trying to second guess everything. I do want to know some things. Yeah.
Okay. Grace?
Just while we were talking about insulting language and things, just wanted to say-
Let's, let's keep it germane to the motion on the floor, please. And you as well.
Mary Alice?
I just wanted to say to the chair that after we talk about this and vote, that we need to make a motion to extend-
Yes, to extend. Yes, I'm watching the clock as well. Thank you. Jaya?
Yeah, I'd just like to request somewhere in this process to have a little bit of additional time for questions for, for staff regarding how this overall would impact the city.
After this motion?
That's fine.
Okay.
So as a reminder, the motion on the floor is to divide the question. The first question being to amend the budget to include a deputy chief, and the second question being the addition of three officers to the Office of Community Relations. So the first question, the motion is made by Mary Alice, seconded by James. The question of the addition of deputy, oh, no, the, the question of dividing it to, to begin with. Will, will the clerk please call the row?
Correct. And then there will be an opportunity for motions to be made to approve this, if it's split, the split ones. So, okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
So that motion fails to pass, so there will be no splitting of the question. We are back at discussion of the, the main motion on the floor of ordinance number 2023-112-046.
Are we at question or discussion?
Yeah, point of order, there has been no motion made on the item.
Discussion of this item.
But there's no motion on the floor.
Oh, questions. Gotcha.
Jaya?
Yeah, I, I'd like, just logistically like to know, because we have so many city vacancies, what would the timeline even be for adding new positions? Because this is being pushed forward as something that we need to do a budget amendment for, but we have so many vacancies that aren't even posted for other city positions that are vitally needed.
So, so the deputy chief position is internal. That would be, I would expect fairly quick. We're continuously recruiting police officers, so there's always a pool of applicants.
Any more questions? Okay, so we are looking at ordinance number 2023-12-046. If there are no questions, Sharice?
Okay, I'll make a motion for ordinance number 2023-12-046, an ordinance revising annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five, police staffing, to go forward for approval from regular council.
I'll second, so we have a discussion.
Ordinance number 2023-12-046, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget number, budget amendment number five, police staffing.
Point of order of the clerk. If, if we would like to defer something to a point of future time where we do not know when the future time is going to be, is there a possibility of doing that?
You can certainly motion to keep something into committee. Historically, when we've motioned to keep something in committee and we didn't know quite when it would return, usually because we were allowing time for staff to complete a task before bringing it back. That has been done before. It just should be indicated as part of the motion that you are not indicating a specific committee meeting to bring it back to. But some sort of guidance, I think, would be helpful to inform when it will return, if possible.
So if we were to do that and then request from Barry Dunn a more firm timeline at a future committee of the whole meeting, we could defer it at that point to the, to a point beyond the report coming out? If we knew when the report was coming out?
You could, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Discussion. Jaya?
Yeah, I'm sure that this is a frustrating experience, and I acknowledge that we, you know, other council members said we, we picked someone we wanted to look at things and do things differently. But I also think that it's important for us to recognize that while we've asked Chief Boone to have the responsibility of the police department, the city council has the responsibility to all of its residents. We are all here to serve the residents of Urbana. And I'm purposely saying residents, I'm not just saying citizens, because anyone who lives in this city is someone that we have a responsible, a responsibility to regardless of their citizenship status. So I think it's important that we have a full picture, and this is part of a full budget conversation, because if we are choosing to allocate resources to increase resources in one department, it very well may come at the expense of another. And I think it's, you know, we're in a, a small community, and I think a lot of times people don't like when we compare ourselves to Champaign, and there's good reason for that, right? They're much bigger, they have much more revenue than we do, but they have a whole department focused on equity and get engagement outside of the police department, and we don't have anything. So if we're going to be talking about more community engagement, it can't just start and stop with law enforcement. We need to be looking at this holistically of what are the needs for our community and what is the best placement that we, as a- And what is the best placement that we as a city council, because the budget is a statement of our values. It is something, it is one of the areas that the city council has a major responsibility in, where often we do not have the ability to make other decisions that are important to the city. And so while I recognize and appreciate the expertise that Chief Boone is bringing to our city, there's a lot of expertise that we have in our community, both on the city staff and as well as in other members of our community. So it's important that this process, this kind of large decision about how we are allocating resources, how we are stating our values, is one that is open to communication, that is given adequate time, and that is weighed among the very many different priorities that we have as we are making decisions about resource allocation.
Mary Alice.
So I, I would want to acknowledge a couple of things. The first one is I want to acknowledge people who came out tonight and say that I hear you loud and clear. I agree that we have always talked about having the Barry Dunn report. I completely understand that. I also agree that we need more mental health services, more substance abuse programs. Absolutely, 100% beside the community on that. I also recognize that when Chief Boone came here, he had several town halls. He talked about who he was, what he brings to the city, he met with city council members. He very explicitly said, you do not have enough police officers, you need more. He very explicitly said to us, these are the programs that I did in Norfolk, Virginia. Some of these might work here. He very explicitly said to us that I want to go somewhere that's ready to make a change. All right, so how do we balance all of these items? That's the question, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to divide the question. I wanted to divide the question because I feel like logistically, we can start making some structural changes within the police department. With the new stuff, I, I understand the frustration, I'm sure, of, of the staff in terms of wanting to get, move forward with some of these initiatives, get off the ground, start going. But we have said multiple times that we're gonna wait for the Barry Dunn report. So I feel like I have to stand behind that. I would have been willing to vote for the deputy chief tonight and I would have been willing to keep it in committee so that we could get the Barry Dunn report. That was my intention and perhaps I should have said that earlier, but that's what I'm gonna say right now.
Chris.
So James, are you gonna make a motion to defer this till the Barry Dunn report comes in?
That's why I was asking the question because I, I don't, you know, this is a resolution that requires six votes to pass at the city council. And at this point in time, I do not count six votes in favor of it. And rather than just say no and, and turn it away, I do think we're going to have to make hires based on the Barry Dunn report. And I do think that Chief Boone's predictions are likely to be borne out as to what they recommend. But I would like to have that in hand when I'm making the vote. The challenge is, you're not allowed to defer something to an indefinite point in time. So our options are to keep it in committee until we know when the Barry Dunn report is gonna be and then defer it to a point in time after that.
So you are gonna make that-
If we're not just going to have a vote now and have it fail.
Well, I mean, you're, I mean, it's your ball. I mean, are you going to make a motion or not?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so-
For the, for the, to vote on the-
We would have to withdraw the current motion and-
Okay.
Substitute a motion to-
Okay, is anybody withdrawing the motion?
That would be up to Sharice.
Sharice.
I'm not withdrawing the motion. I put the, I put it on the motion in the first place so that we could discuss it because I knew exactly where it was gonna go. James brought it up. That is, I, I, I would support deferring it until after the Barry Dunn. Until we get the Barry Dunn report. Keep it in the committee, yeah.
A point of clarification, are you interested in amending your emotion so that we can defer it to a future committee meeting?
I can amend it.
To keep it in committee?
In committee.
If you, if you're willing to do that, I'll update my second.
Okay. I'm willing to do that mainly because I'd rather not see it fail. I want to see something go forward and that will be helpful.
Additionally, procedurally, it is now 10:29 by my watch. Prior to 10:30, we have to motion second and vote to extend the meeting.
Okay, so I would like a motion to-
Move to extend till 10:50?
No, we have one more thing.
Okay, 11 o'clock?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Grace and seconded by James to extend the meeting till 11 o'clock. All those in favor, or we have a roll call?
You can do voice vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Okay, back to ordinance-
The chair clarified where we are at right now with the motion.
Yes, I was just about to say. Ordinance number 2023-12-046, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number five, police staffing. It was, Sharice has amended her motion to keep this item in committee. And that was, James was seconded with that. So now we're on discussion of keeping this item in committee.
Yeah, yeah, we, I amended it and he seconded it, yeah.
And he did, yep.
And now we're discussing that, I guess.
Yes, so-
Or do we need to vote?
Is there any discussion about keeping it in committee? We are keeping it into, in committee until we can confirm when the Barry Dunn report will be available to us.
We need a vote on that, correct?
Well, you can discuss it because it's a motion. Motion and a second, we amended the original, so you are welcome to discuss, we are also welcome to vote, it's-
Yeah, sorry, I thought our discussion was done.
Mary Alice.
All right, most people know me as the person who always questions the finances. So let me go on record saying that I do think that money is needed for public safety. I am willing to approve a vote for public safety to increase what the council decides based on the reports. Does that look like 15 officers? Does that look like a co-response like Eugene Oregon? Does it look like many other things? Okay, so I, I do want to go on record saying that I, I am in support of funding something that's gonna work for our community. I, I feel like the community thinks that we need to wait for the report and I understand why they feel like that and I agree. We are a small group and we're a small city, we don't have a ton of money. But we do also need to acknowledge that we need to make investments. And so I will be supporting keeping it in committee.
Jaya.
Hi, I, I think we're, I would imagine everyone's supportive of public safety. I have to say, even with keeping it in committee, I don't feel like, even with the Barry Dunn study, that's a piece of it. But to me, this also involves the budget, so we need both of those pieces in order to be able to move forward. We need to know what the recommendations are from Barry Dunn. And I think we also need to take into consideration some of the feedback we've gotten from our residents that are concerned about some of the interactions we've had. There's still a whole nother survey that's supposed to be part of that as well. So I think we need to see that, but I also need to know how this lines up with the rest of the budget before I feel comfortable on voting on this.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, well, will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti.
No.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
No.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to keep that item in committee passes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-12-095R, a resolution adopting guidelines for redistricting city ward, county, city council ward maps. It's so late.
I'll try to be quick. Before you tonight is, you're being asked to approve guidelines for the process of redistricting the city council ward map. As people, as you know, our population in the census 2020 officially decreased from 41,250 people to 38,336. Our city council ward boundaries now need to be adjusted to reflect the change in the population. And this has to be done before the November 2024 petition filing period. And we have a municipal election coming up in April of 2025. So the goal is to spend next spring on the redistricting map process and to have a map in place by May of 2024. We're going to, after looking at different processes recently followed, we've, we are proposing to use the process similar to what was used recently in the city of Champaign where the public was invited to participate in the process and to use a mapping tool called Dave's Redistricting, which has been used in many other communities in recent years. So what you have before you tonight, though, are the proposed guidelines for this process. And we'll bring back more details on the process itself at a future meeting. But for the public information and for our discussion, we have 11 proposed guidelines. These are based on requirements of state law, best practices, and experience in other communities. So the first of the guidelines is each of the seven proposed wards should contain the residence of the incumbent city council member, which means you can't be drawn out of your current ward. We do know that one council member has recently moved. If anyone else has recently moved, you need to please let us know as soon as you can because we will indicate on the base map, the starting point, that where, where your residence is so people can use that as a reference. Any map that's proposed should be based on the census 2020 data. That's certified as official by the state of Illinois. So that's why we're starting with a base map. Well, I forgot to say, the base map in Dave's Redistricting will contain the existing ward boundaries, but the populations will be updated to reflect the 2020 census. So you'll be able to see how the, you know, the populations vary among the wards. The wards should be reasonably compact and contiguous. In Urbana, though, you know, with the density of population on campus compared to the lower density in the various other parts of the city, some wards are gonna be geographically larger than others and that's due to the difference in the types of housing, population density, land use, annexation patterns. And that's very similar to what you see today in our maps. This is another important one. Number four, wards should be substantially equal in population. Based on census 2020, that means ward populations of ideally 5,477. Courts will tolerate no more than a 10% deviation between the lowest and highest population wards. One of the beauties of the Dave's tool is that it automatically calculates to the person your population as you start to adjust the boundaries. It also updates demographic information on a whole lot of other things. So you can see exactly what the impact of moving each line is when you, when you do it. Whenever possible, census blocks should be utilized as the building blocks of redistricting. Maps should avoid fragmenting or packing racial minority communities. Maps should not dilute the voting strength of racial minority populations. Proposed maps may take into consideration respecting traditional neighborhoods and existing subdivisions taking into consideration the maximum deviation allowed. And you always have to go back to that population number. That's, that's what you're drawing the map around. Precinct demographic, population, and other data is provided in the software platform to inform the process. Precincts shouldn't be divided between two or more wards unless it's necessary to equalize populations between wards. And it's very likely that precincts in our small city are going to be divided. That's just, that's just the nature of how it's gonna be, given the size of the precincts and the size of our city. And ultimately, city council isn't limited to selecting any of the proposed maps submitted by the public. And by public, I also mean, this includes city council members. Everyone is free to, to submit a map. It doesn't mean that you can't start with a map that, there may be a map that actually you like a lot, but you may want to make a few adjustments to and that's perfectly fine too. But you're, you know, it basically gives flexibility for selecting a map. The district maps that are drawn have to comply with all federal, state, and case law. The, what we envision the process to be, it's listed here in the resolution. That's not really what you're voting on tonight, but proposed timeline of the process and we can discuss this. And I'd like feedback on that, actually. We, we'd like to get this underway in January of 2024 and that would be a period of open submission. February would involve legal review of any submitted maps. We want to make sure that maps comply with the guidelines, particularly the population guidelines and the deviation guidelines, as well as make sure that incumbents are not drawn out of their wards. Council will review all of the eligible submitted maps. Those will also be available for public, to the public as well. And during the month of April, we hope to have the discussion and a selection of a final ward map. Or if you, if there's more than one that, that looks good to you, you can choose more than one to submit, submit for public comment on. And then by May, we'd like to have approval of the final ward map. And this will be plenty of time before election season, which will be starting in late August of next year. So tonight, the resolution before you focuses on the proposed 11 guidelines.
James, questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. One is, although the map is gonna represent the 2020 census, would it be possible to share the information of which tracts are going to be recounted? Because I think it's important for people to understand that there are some tracts that have unbelievably low counts and will, that will likely be corrected. And since this lasts for 10 years and we have some ability to vary the populations a little bit, I think we, I think people who are proposing maps should have that information as a potential-
Yeah, I mean, that's, that, that map has been submitted to the Census Bureau and that's what will be recounted, so-
We just need to share it with the Dave's Redistricting-
I don't know if it can be embedded in-
Maybe not embedded, but when we, when we have a website that says this is Dave's-
Yes, we can have a separate map showing where it's gonna be counted. Basically, it's the tracks closest to campus, but not all of them. So yes, we can show a separate map.
And then is the, maybe this isn't important for tonight, but when someone submits a map, are we going to ask them to either come and present or submit a rationale with their map? Or will it just be, here's what I think it should look like?
At this point, we're anticipating, we've set up a separate email so that it goes straight to that email account. And at this point, we're anticipating just accepting, if, if, accepting a map, but not inviting folks into-
Okay, can we invite them to provide a text description of there, anything they want to share about why they, why they created the map the way they did?
That could be included in the email because they will be submitted via email, sure.
Grace.
Thanks. That was also my question, I guess I'm still not entirely sure, maybe for a later question on how the special census would go in if we don't have those results until after we've potentially redrawn the map.
The census, the redrawing the map will not reflect the special census.
Yeah, so just saying concerns, what if we redraw the map and then we do the special census and then it's out of whack? Because now our campus ward is larger or something?
We cannot, as far as I understand, we, we will not be able to redraw maps.
So my main question is, how can the public edit these maps? When I clicked on it, I didn't see how you could edit it. Maybe you have to sign up?
It's not let yet live, so-
Okay, and that would start in January?
Yeah, yeah, the process is still, we're still working out the process. What's before you tonight is, do you agree with these guidelines to guide the process?
Thank you.
I will say that Dave's has, is, the good thing about Dave's is that it gives a lot of help. There's a lot of help available through it, yeah.
Mary Alice.
So I, I do understand when, even if we do the special census, it, it does not impact the wards itself in terms of the voting, which means we have to do it beforehand. So with that in mind and looking at the current population deviation from ideal, Ward Two is really, really different. We know that Illinois Street Residence Hall was closed during that time, which is approximately, what, 350 people?
700.
700 people, so I'm wondering if we should- Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm wondering if, are we not able to do greater than 10% threshold? Is that, we are, that is the top that we can go?
That's what's tolerated by the courts. That's what's tolerated by the courts.
All right.
I know, we're, it's.
Sorry.
And we?
Very frustrating.
And we can't move the special census up?
No. We're set at October 15th. So that's the census date. We won't have the information until 2025, which is after the election. I know, COVID is the gift that keeps on giving, in a bad way.
What time is it? Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion. I move that we send on to city council, if I can find it, sorry. There it is. Resolution number 2023-12-095R, resolution adopting guidelines for redistricting of city council ward map to city council with a recommendation for approval.
One second.
It was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Ja.
Oh, is the other one on consent?
The paid leave ordinance for all workers is on the consent agenda.
I'll, I'll do it on consent if that's okay.
I'm still good with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Ja that Resolution Number 2023-12-095R, a resolution adopting guidelines for redistricting city council ward map onto city council for approval on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? James?
Just real quick, I wanted to say for the record that items number five and nine are, are very, well, five and 10 are very important. One thing that I know from the county's experience with this, if you let historic boundaries be sacrosanct, you will have consequences that carry forward historic situations. So I would encourage people that, to build the maps, to not be afraid of breaking census blocks or breaking precincts. I know our county clerk will not be happy with me for that because it creates complications with the voting process. But our precincts were designed many, many years ago. And, and if you, we learned this with the county, if you start with seeds that respect, like, city boundaries or township boundaries, you end up with situations that look like they were 20, 30 years ago. And that's not, not a good thing. So there's unintended consequences by following those lines too closely. So don't be afraid to break them if you're working on a map.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is council input. Grace?
I do want to say my, some things I feel compelled to say, to share, that I did not like some of the comments about and directed towards the public this evening. I feel compelled to say some things since that is who I work for and who we all work for here is for the people of Urbana. I think it's also not okay to besmeach the public, to say that the public can't do any besmeaching, but let's not also besmeach them. People are entitled to their opinions, and they don't need the chief of police to validate their feelings and experiences. I think the public has shown up, and they do deserve our respect. And they are the people whom we work for. There was a great turnout in my ward listening session, even though we had a week and a half notice to prepare for it. I think people came out tonight. We've had emails. We've had people who have been following and engaging for years. I don't appreciate the comments calling the public rude from our chief of police for some of the side conversations in the audience, which was the same thing that he and the deputy chief were doing right here in front of us while council members were talking and right over there while the public was speaking. I know people aren't perfect. It's hard to interact together. But I just felt compelled to say some things on behalf of the public, whom I absolutely work for exclusively, and we all work for the people of Urbana. And I would like to keep that in mind with some respectful language towards them and their participation. Thank you.
Ja.
Yeah, I have to say I had a similar feeling to what Grace just expressed in terms of some of the ways that the public was referred to or talked about this evening. We, this, you know, people get passionate. There are things that people might have strong feelings on one way or another. But I do think it's important that anyone who is sitting up here, anyone who works for the city in any capacity keeps in mind that we are here to serve the residents of Urbana. And there are going to be times where people say things that are hurtful, that people might take offense to, that people might have different opinions of. But I think that we should be expected to have a higher standard of how we are communicating with the people that we serve. So I, I will say I was kind of disappointed in the tenor of some of the conversation tonight. And I, I think that we, as a city, can do better. On a very different note, I will say I also have been asking some questions just to get some clarification on what exactly are the restrictions for skateboarding in Urbana? I know, you know, the, this is going back to last week, but it's important. We had a huge turnout related to skateboarding. We know that the park districts plan for a skate park are, you know, down the road. So I think for me, at least, I'd like a better understanding of, you know, what are the barriers for the folks who do skate being able to use parking lots or, you know, other areas? I had a conversation with one of the folks who showed up last week, over the weekend, and kind of got the feedback of, like, just give us a space. Like, not even necessarily asking for equipment or lighting or any of the things that we might think of in terms of a skate park. So I think just getting a little bit more clarification because, you know, it was mentioned, there have been previous pop-ups. So what are some ways that we can at least create some opportunities for that incredible groundswell of people who came out and said that this is something that would make a difference to them, especially since we know that a more permanent skate park's probably a long way out? So I will look forward to hearing more about that and see if there's something we can do to create that space for our residents.
Mary Alice?
I feel that I need to address, we had so many comments from the property tax. And I, and I wanted to let everybody know that the property tax, only 14% goes to the city? Is that right? 14 or 13?
Now I think it's 12 and a half. 12 and a half to 13.
So we are not taking any money from the schools. Schools have their own taxing body, right? They've got a huge percentage, a majority of the funds. And, and then in the 13, 12 and a half, 13% that we have, 40% of that goes to the library. So like, all this money that we're talking about, that we will be talking about hopefully when we look at public safety, it's actually not coming from the property tax. That's, that's not a big component of it. It's coming from general funds. I did pull up, we used to have in our budget book the breakdown of the, what comes out of the city's portion of the property tax. But there is something on the general fund, which is the vast majority of where we spend our money. And 13% of the general fund comes from property tax. So I just wanted to share that with people. Lots of other things to unpack, but I know it's late.
Anyone else? Yes, Mayor Meyer, like?
I can add to Mary Alice's question or answer Mary Alice's question. The library gets part of the property tax that comes to the city, and another chunk goes to, by state law, we're mandated for police and fire pensions. So what's left for city purposes, general operation fund purposes, is anywhere from 2 and 1/2 to 3 cents out of that 13 cents that people pay for every dollar. So very little of your property tax bills comes to the city of Urbana government.
Sharice?
On Thursday, there is a planning commission meeting. And I know that, I've brought this up before regarding the Hope Village. We are still fighting, and I want to, I want to just bring this because we're going to be bringing this up to the council as well. The planning commission asked for an alternative regarding the access into Hope Village because they wanted to go through another community to get there. And we have been pressing and pressing for it to be Federal Drive. Are you guys? And so our consultant, Robert Lewis, who also used to be an alderperson for Ward Three, is an engineer. He designs these kinds of communities. And he came up with this design in, as an alternative. And we're hoping to get on the agenda for the planning commission on Thursday. I would really like for you guys, or anybody, if you have the opportunity or the time to come out just to, so you can see the, the interaction regarding this problem and our issue with Carl and how they have presented the, this particular issue, which, which it, for my community, for my ward, it seems quite disingenuous because there are alternatives. And they've always played it as if there weren't. So I would like to invite you all to come to planning commission meeting on Thursday. We will be bringing this also to city council when the time, opportunity presents itself. We're hoping to do a presentation to present our side of that story.
Anyone else? Okay, with no further business, before the council, this meeting is adjourned.